Good morning, everyone. Hereby convene this public hearing of the government, administration, and elections committee. Are there any remarks from my co-chair? From our rankings?
Ready to go.
All right. Next up, we have bills for review. First up on our testimony list is Latoya Clough. And you're right there. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello and good morning. Thank you for having me again. My name is Latoya Clough, the vice chairwoman of the Mashin Tuket Pequot Tribal Nation. To my right, we have Treasurer Rails. He's also a member of the Mashin Tuket Pequot Tribal Nation. Today, I will be addressing two bills, SJ16 and House Bill 6040. Again, thank you for your time. The Mashin Tuket Pequot Tribal Nation submits this testimony in support of Senate Joint Resolution 16. This resolution is so meaningful for our tribe in so many ways, and we believe that this is long overdue. The condemnation of the genocidal provisions of the 1638 Treaty of Hartford, an agreement that sought to erase the very existence of our people. The Treaty of Hartford was executed in the wake of the Pequot War, widely considered the first major conflict between native peoples and the English colonists. The war culminated in the devastating Mystic massacre of our people in 1637, where hundreds of Pequot men, women, and children were slaughtered in our village. Survivors were enslaved, exiled, or forced to assimilate with other native nations under this treaty due to the fear of death. That treaty followed in 1638, formalized the attempt, excuse me, attempted ratification of our nation. The terms of this treaty stripped us of our lands and forbade us from gathering as a people, from returning to our ancestral homelands. Even the reference of the name Pequot was outlawed. The treaty authorized the selling of our people into slavery. Those who were remains were treated as spoils of war, assigned to servitude under English colonists, or allied native nations. The Pequots were, in effect, legislated out of existence. Yet despite the efforts we endured, we've adapted, survived, and passed down our culture, language, and history. Often in secret, we've always, excuse me, often in secret and with always with hope, generations of our ancestors resisted the erasure of the identity, holding fast to our Pequot roots even when speaking our name was forbidden. Today, the Mashin Tuket Pequot Tribal Nation stands as a testament to that survival and resilience. We have reclaimed our lands, revitalized our governance, and reinvested into our culture and people. We are proud to contribute to Connecticut's economy, creating thousands of jobs, and also maintaining our sovereign government-to-government relations with the state and the federal government. SJ16 is an important acknowledgement of the painful past and a powerful recognition of the dignity and survival of the Pequot people. It condemns actions that are today understood as crimes against humanity, efforts to erase a people from its history, and reinforces Connecticut's commitment to historical truth, justice, and reconciliation. We deeply appreciate the leadership of Senator Austin and this committee for advancing Senate Joint Resolution 16 and condemning the provisions of the Treaty of Hartford. You honor not only our ancestors who endured unspeakable sufferings, but who also persevered to ensure the survival and resurgence of our nation. We thank you for your time and consideration on this very important matter. Moving on to testimony, House Bill 6040. The Mashin Tuket Pequot Tribal Nation submits this testimony, which establishes thoughtful inclusive process for adding new statues to the Connecticut State Capitol and creating a historical commission to guide memorization effort.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but your time has expired. But I'm sure that there are questions from the committee, and I'll ask you one first, which is, could you explain to me why it's important to set out a process for adding statues to the Connecticut State Capitol?
Absolutely. I think that when you're looking to add a statue, there's many things that need to be considered, and I think most importantly is the history, the meaning behind it. And so being made aware of the history, for example, again, I was not able to get into that with my testimony here, but, you know, John Mason led the attack at Fort Mystic. And knowing what happened, you know, at that event was a major traumatic experience. Again, they went there with the intent to genocide a people. And although it's not a great part of our history, it is the truth. And so I think we, the tribe, has always had a good relationship with the state. We want to continue that relationship, but part of that relationship is also sharing the truth, no matter how ugly it is. And so to allow for someone to be praised in a good way, knowing what they did many years ago, wiping out a people, it's not something that we want to praise, but also, again, just share that history is an educational component. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from the committee? Representative Mass Francesco.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony today. I appreciate you coming in. So you're testifying in support of 6040, where we can add statutes, but you also want us to remove statutes?
Yes.
And that's particularly the John Mason statue.
Particularly. And again, I think right now, John Mason, again, I just shared a little bit about that. And so I think removing it to maybe the old state building where it can exist as an exhibit, and again, just sharing the history that took place instead of being put on a pedestal, if you will, the tribe feels that that's important. Again, we're not trying to not share the history. The history happened, it took place, but we want to just be able to not memorialize, you know, such bad acts that took place against our people many years ago.
I understand that. So this issue has come up in the past.
Yes.
It seems that there's a lot of statutes that people want removed. And while I think we should learn from history, and I think that's important, but I don't think removing them, removing them actually takes them out of the history. So I understand that you wanted to add something, but to remove the John Mason statue, I think, would be a terrible idea because I think people need to learn from history. There's a lot of statutes around that could be deemed as maybe not appropriate for some people, but by just removing all of these, what are we doing? We're erasing history. I like people to learn from history. I don't think that's the proper way. I do understand that you want to add something, but you specifically want to remove one and replace it with another, which I certainly don't agree with, but I appreciate you coming in to testify today. Thank you.
And so if I can just respond to that again, we agree, we're not trying to erase the history, we're trying to share the history. And so we just felt like maybe moving it to a different location as an educational piece or an exhibit would be more appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Further questions from the committee? Senator Sampson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm glad you saw me. I tried to jump in when you asked about the ranking members too, because I just wanted to apologize to the committee that I'm a little under the weather today, and so that's why I'm participating by Zoom. And--
Well, actually, thank you for that. Thank you for not sharing your germs.
Yes, no, I didn't want to come and get anybody else sick. Sadly, that's what happened to me. I showed up and sat next to someone who was clearly sick this week, and obviously, that's how we keep these things going. So I'm going to try and make an end with me. At any rate, thank you very much, Madam Chairman, and I appreciate you being here. It's, excuse me, it's Ms. Clough, is that correct?
Yes, Vice Chairwoman Clough.
Vice Chairwoman, very good. Thank you so much for being here today. I appreciate your testimony, and it's obviously something that you're extremely passionate about. But I have to be frank, it's a little frustrating to stop the, you know, the work that we do debating policy affecting the citizens of Connecticut to address something that, in my view, really has very little to do with the state of Connecticut. You know, this resolution is about something that happened in 1638, right? So the United States wasn't even declared an independent nation until 1776. So I'm curious why you feel it's necessary for an entirely different country, the United States of America, to address this issue? Have you, you know, brought this concern to, you know, across the pond, you know, to England? I'm just curious why it's important for Connecticut to address it through you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you for your questions. Again, we feel that it's very important because although, yes, the Connecticut did not gain its independence until 1776, and this happened prior to that, we do feel that Pequot history is a part of Connecticut's history. And so just because of the timeline, we don't want to not acknowledge what took place. And so we just feel it's our job to help share and educate what took place here in Connecticut.
I certainly appreciate that. And again, I mean, I'm trying to be as respectful as I can. I just, you know, the problem with these types of issues is that there are multiple sides of these stories, and I'm not taking a side by any stretch of the imagination. I don't know enough about, you know, Pequot history or what happened in 1638. And that's one of the reasons why I have a concern about a resolution like this, is that we're being asked to, you know, make a very powerful statement about something that I don't think that the majority of our membership has any real knowledge of. You know, just, you know, reading about this last year, I think, when there was the big debate over the Mason statue, you know, certainly, you can condemn John Mason for his actions, but John Mason was not acting alone, he was acting on behalf of the colonies. And I think that the argument on the other side would be that he was responding to an attack on the colonists by the Pequot Tribe. So based on that, I don't understand why we would be asked to put so many of our elected officials in a tough position to try and make a statement about something we are not properly informed of and that would rightly be disputed by a number of folks. Do you hear what I'm saying at all through you, Madam Chairman?
Yes, I absolutely do. I'm just allowing you to complete your statements. I would suggest to you and any others who aren't familiar with the Pequot history, I would welcome you all to our museum where you can learn so much about our history and, again, why this is so important to us. And I understand that there are many perspectives to this matter here, but, again, we feel strongly, this is the position of the tribal nation, and we're just asking that it be respected and honored.
I appreciate that, and I think it's perfectly fine. Obviously, certainly, your tribal nation should be able to have its, you know, views memorialized and honored and remembered. I just don't know that the state of Connecticut, which has no part in this at all, has a role to play at all. I mean, the state of Connecticut existed, but it was under British rule at the time, and it was not any American government or American institution that was engaged in that battle. It was a British colony that was involved, and there's a dispute over who's really responsible. And to blame, you know, one of the soldiers, albeit the general or whatever his title was at the time, for it, I think he was being instructed to do what he did. Again, not defending it, just saying, you know, it's one of those questions that bleeds over into the other bill about the statues. And that is that, you know, we have lots of people in American history that have negatives. I mean, Thomas Jefferson, you know, every time you bring up Thomas Jefferson's name, somebody's going to point out that he owned slaves. Because he owned slaves, and that is certainly something that brings shame to his name and to our nation, and we've thankfully, you know, fought to end slavery, you know, we lost 600,000 people in the Civil War over that battle, and we condemn slavery outright today. But does that mean that we should just disregard Thomas Jefferson? Should Thomas Jefferson's statue go as well?
I would think so. Again, I think that it's not to eliminate the statue, but again, maybe place them in an exhibit hall where they are used for educational purposes. They did have a role in the American history, and it's not to take away from that, but, again, we don't have slavery today. I understand at the time that's what we did have, but, you know, many, many moves with legislation has been made to change and end slavery and many other matters that no longer exist today that existed in those time periods.
Right.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm just going to interject just generally, and we're having a very respectful conversation right now, and it's not, I'm not suggesting anything otherwise, but let's just, in our questions and answers, try to keep our questions and answers to the language of the bill before us, and, you know, try to keep us away from a debate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. You know, forgive me, you know, these are your bills, you put them on the agenda. I do my best to try and, you know, do some fact finding, but the way to do that sometimes involves, you know, pointing out the alternative view and getting a response to it. I won't ask any other questions. I'll just say that I think it's, you know, I don't know, it's very clear that there's a difference in perspective about how we maintain our history. And I think to pull down statues because of things that have, you know, changed in our culture over time, it doesn't change the history at all. And I think that Thomas Jefferson, for example, could be recognized for the tremendous accomplishments while at the same time being condemned for owning slaves. And I'll just leave it there. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Further questions from the committee? My co-chair, Senator Flexer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Thank you for coming and for providing your testimony today. A lot of what you shared in your testimony, I found to be very interesting and compelling in arguments for for this resolution. Let's talk about that first. And I think you said in your testimony that this treaty was not only one of the first concerning acts of violence against indigenous people in this country, but it also essentially put the Pequot people into slavery. And was that perhaps also one of the first documents in this country that did that?
Yes.
That's what you said.
Yeah, we, again, we believe according to our history, and you have to realize with many indigenous tribes, the history is, for us, we didn't really always document it. It was passed down through just who we are. And so again, that major conflict, we believe, is really the first, and it really did impact how Pequot people were able to live. Again, not being able to even say the word Pequot, being sold into slaves, and not even just to the colonists. But now we call them our, you know, our sister tribes, other tribal nations, where normally, we would come and stand together. So yes, that is what we believe. Thank you.
And were these practices then replicated in other conflicts and other acts of violence towards indigenous people in this country? Was this sort of the model to be followed?
Yes, yes. You have to understand, again, and just knowing a little bit about the history, and if you can indulge me, just sharing the history just a teeny bit, the Pequots at the time where we were located, we were a thriving people. We had no issues, if you will, with anyone. We were able to have trades with fur and wampum. We were living on the coast. We were able to provide and sustain for ourselves. And then at contact, basically, that's when things really started to change the way we live and started to define the first major conflict for us and many other indigenous tribes as well, specifically here in the Northeast.
Thank you. And, you know, I'm continually impressed by the work that your tribe does. You know, being from Eastern Connecticut, the work that you do in terms of recognizing your history and being a resource to educate everyone about the history of Connecticut and Eastern Connecticut in particular, and the work that you do with young people. There's a lot of thousands of young people that come through and see what your tribe has archived every year. And so I wonder if you could just tell me what a difference it would make when you're talking about the Treaty of Hartford, and the Pequot wars, and the violence that was a part of that. If you were able to reflect that, you know, almost 400 years later, the state of Connecticut did something meaningful to recognize that violence, to talk about its historical impact, its impact on your people, but what it would also mean to be able to tell young children when they come through, that that history is being recognized, and that there's some accountability. There's conversation about how to make it better and how to move forward together.
Well, in my opinion, I think you actually answered that. We are just looking for to continue to strengthen our relationship with the state, but owning up to the, you know, taking on accountability. Again, it's not a great history. And we're not trying to hide anything. You know, there are many sides, many perceptions to what took place. Many different people believe certain things to be right, wrong, or incorrect. We are literally just trying to share the history as we know it to be true. And so I think being able to be more aware of that and seeing that, you know, the state could possibly consider this, is a huge, huge step in the right direction with really just trying to correct past behaviors and strengthen the relationship with the state and the tribe as well. And so again, I would strongly suggest anyone who has not been to our museum to please visit it. Nine times out of 10, you will get a tour from a Mashantucket Pequot tribal member. And so to receive a tour about our history and sharing our culture from an actual tribal member, it's not like any other experience. You can see, you can feel the the intenseness of, you know, us sharing our history with you. And so it's really just all about education. We're not trying to say, you know, we were right, we were wrong, the state was right, the state was wrong. There's a history. There's some ugliness in the history, and we just want to be able to have that opportunity to share that full history. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and your testimony and your advocacy. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further questions from the committee? We're checking the Zoom. But while we do, I had a couple for you. First of all, do you think, well, first of all, I'll start with this. Do most Mashantucket Pequots know about the Treaty of Hartford? And is it a part of their identity?
Yes, I would say that we do. I mean, we have a child development center, and so we have infants there. And we do a great job at sharing our culture and our history at all levels. We have social events, we have cultural events throughout the year with our community, where we are able to speak our language. We have a language revitalization act that we have been focusing on. And so we are looking to continue to bring back the language and allow for more people to learn the language. We have dance class, culture. Skimitson is our biggest cultural event of the year, and we have people coming from all over to witness that. And so again, we do what we can. We have speakers at different high schools, colleges, there's groups and support clubs. We do our best to ensure that we are sharing our history, our culture, not only with our very own family members, our community members, but also throughout the state, excuse me, the entire state, the Northeast. We've had people come over from different continents to specifically come tour our museum. So to me, that's very meaningful to know that we have people from other continents that look to want to learn more about our culture and who we are as a people. So that means a lot to us. Thank you.
Thanks. And my second question is, do you think most residents of Connecticut know anything about the Treaty of Hartford?
That I'm not really sure of. I know that there are people who are aware. I'm just not sure how many people are aware of it, and more so, what the significance and the meaning of the Treaty of Hartford is, and what the intent for that treaty was meant to be for for Pequots.
And what would it mean for the tribe? And what do you think it would mean for the people of Connecticut to have greater awareness of the Treaty of Hartford, its history, and its provisions?
I think it's just a good opportunity just to be informed. Like anything, in life, the more you know, you're able to make more informed decisions. It can help to address, you know, different biases, discriminations. Again, we feel that we are a great partner to the state. And again, we're just looking to tell our story as we see fit.
And kind of in line with that, with the bill to to create a process for designating statues, what opportunities do you see with a bill like that for creating greater awareness of history in Connecticut?
I think it definitely shares the history in a way that it's never been shared before. I think it's an opportunity for the history to be shared in a way where there could be a hands-on approach. You could do exhibit halls, you could have a museum. There's so many things that can be done. And so again, that's just kind of our point in what we're looking to do.
Well, thank you for those answers. You know, I certainly think, I certainly agree with you. I think it's really important to create awareness and understanding of our history, our full history. And I think that knowing more about our history in Connecticut, the United States, and the world can only can only make us better people who can be more understanding of one another. And I think, you know, creating processes to guide how we memorialize that history here at the Capitol, as well as other places, could be very helpful. You know, we often make decisions here as political bodies, based on what we know at the time. And that's certainly not to fault anyone. But, you know, it can only help us as political leaders, in terms of how we memorialize history, to know more, to create a process to let historians and archival research and, you know, other insights guide our actions. And, you know, history has is and has always been contested. There are always narratives and counter narratives. And it's important, I think, to have that complexity. And I think these two bills could help add to that. So I guess my, that's a statement, and you can respond to it if you like.
I will. And so to your point about, you know, making laws, I think part of that is inclusion, right? Because, you know, you have people who are making these laws and policies. But if you don't know everything, and if you're not fully informed and aware, you will be missing a big piece of how to put a process forward, what to include in your your policy and your law. So again, we are always, you know, looking to make ourselves available to provide feedback on any laws or policy changes that could impact our people in our history. So I think, again, anytime, you know, there's a consideration for that, we would definitely make ourselves available to be able to provide feedback and share, to make sure that our points are being understood and heard. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And if I can make one more statement before I let you go, your message suggesting people go to the Mashantucket Pequot Museum and Research Center is one that I can fully endorse, from my own experience. It's a fantastic museum. People will learn a lot about our native tribes, about Pequots, and also just, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a great opportunity and way to educate kids generally. So I certainly thank you for all the work the tribe has done on that museum, and I encourage people to go there. So.
Great. Thank you all so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Next up is Thomas Burr, followed by Andrew Rhodes, followed by Ian McDonald.
Good morning, Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, and members of the committee. My name is Thomas Burr. I'm the Public Policy Manager for the Connecticut Chapter of the National Alliance on Mental Illness, otherwise known as NAMI Connecticut. NAMI is the nation's largest grassroots mental health organization that is dedicated to building better lives for the millions of Americans affected by mental illness. For any members of the committee who aren't familiar with NAMI, I have included some more information in my written testimony. I'm testifying today here in support of House Bill 7207, an act concerning the disclosure of insurer reports concerning mental health parity as a public record. NAMI Connecticut, a member of the Connecticut Parity Coalition, has been working for years towards having the healthcare industry adhere to full compliance with existing and longstanding mental health parity laws. Too many of our members and people we care about with mental health conditions routinely cannot access the mental health care that they are already paying for. Due to the nature of these conditions, people usually just give up without appealing to their insurance companies for reconsideration, nor lodging a formal complaint with the Connecticut Department of Insurance. And while the industry may argue that due to the lack of complaints that there isn't a problem here in Connecticut, study after study confirms that this is indeed a real problem. I have included my written testimony to links to several industry reports that illustrate exactly how deep and widespread these problems actually are, namely, the Witt versus U B H decision, the Millman Report, the Bowman Report, and NAMI's The Doctor Is Out report. And I encourage the committee to read those. It's eye opening. HB 7207 is an important step towards ensuring that true parity between mental health and physical health services in Connecticut. The need for better data and accountability is clear. The 2024 report from the Connecticut Office of Health Strategy revealed that four out of seven commercial insurers in Connecticut are exhibiting warning signs of parity noncompliance, underscoring the urgency of continued oversight. Mental health parity is the law. It has been the law for over a decade now, and it should be adhered to. When it isn't, many people, desperate for services, will not receive them, worsening their conditions, which will then cost much more to address. People lose time, their health, sometimes their jobs, and some people will lose their lives. And for some of these people, they will, if they can, switch over to the Connecticut Husky Program, which is in essence, a cost shift from private, for-profit businesses to the state of Connecticut, and ultimately, the taxpaying citizens. And this simply has to stop. In conclusion, I strongly urge the Governorate Administration and Elections Committee to favorably vote on HB 7207. This bill will provide a much-needed improvement on parity reporting, the results of which will then enable us to begin to address the gaps and increase the ability for all individuals with private healthcare insurance in Connecticut to access the care that they need without facing financial discrimination and potentially life-threatening consequences. Thank you for your time and attention. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Other questions from the committee? I had a couple brief questions. So first of all, as I'm sure you know, the bill essentially makes public reports that are currently not public about how and whether insurers are complying with our mental health parity laws. How would making those reports publicly, more publicly accessible, help ensure compliance?
Well, I think the whole goal here is just accountability. Because again, for far too long, the industry claims there isn't a problem. And yet, the independent reporting is clear that there's a huge problem. And to have these reports be public, I think it just provides more insight for people like you, the lawmakers, to say, hey, you know, these laws aren't being adhered to. And so it's kind of a first step, if you will. And this has been the nature of mental health parity since it was first introduced in the Connecticut Legislature, and then through the Affordable Care Act at the federal level. It just hasn't been adhered to. And yet, it seems like we get so much pushback from an industry that claims there's no problem. And yet, there clearly is. So this is just an incremental step to try to get us to where we ultimately need to be, which is to have the healthcare insurance industry provide true parity between mental health and physical health.
Well, I certainly agree with you on that. You know, I think, like a lot of us, I was very proud to support improvements to our mental health parity laws, leaving 2019. And based on public reporting that we've heard as well, it does seem like there is not full compliance with our laws. And that has devastating impacts for individuals who need and deserve mental health care. Mental health care is health care, and it should be, it should be covered like physical health care. And, you know, we passed these laws. They're the law of the state of Connecticut. And if they are not being fully followed, it is just simply unacceptable. And we need to take the steps necessary to make sure that these laws are followed. And I think it's particularly important in an area like mental health care, where there is still a significant amount of stigma that already interferes with people getting the care they need. So I appreciate you being here with us today and offering your testimony on this bill.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Thank you. Further questions from the committee? Thank you very much. Next up is Andrew Rhodes, followed by Ian McDonald, followed by Lisa Glazer. Andrew Rhodes is on the Zoom, I believe. So if you could unmute and turn on your video whenever you're ready, and then you may begin.
All right. Good afternoon, Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, and members of the committee. I'm here testifying today on Bill 7208, that would ensue that public service are safeguarded from privatization efforts that the community input. This bill grants municipalities the option for a referendum if they are considering the privatization of the services currently managed by public employees. This provision is critical as it facilitates community engagement and allows constituents to have a voice in the decisions that fundamentally affect the quality and delivery of the services they receive. There are some pressing concerns regarding the ongoing discussion in my town, Edfield, Connecticut, about the solid waste collection and the potential privatization of our transfer station. It appears that certain council members are prioritizing profit and saving over the public good and community needs. I believe it's crucial that we ensue and ensure our waste management strategies serve the best interests of all of our residents. And I wholeheartedly feel that the privatization cripples communities and only feeds the fire of monop of monopolization. To me, privatization could negatively impact the quality of the work our members provide and the services that our taxpayers receive. As profit motives often serve as an excellence, additionally, it may exacerbate existing inequalities by making essential services less accessible to low-income population. Once competition diminishes, private companies tend to raise prices adversely affecting affordable affordability for the taxpayers of Edfield. I believe it is crucial to consider these factors as we discuss the future of our services. Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, and the members of esteemed board, I leave you with a quote from John F. Kennedy. "The American labor movement has consistently demonstrated its devotion to the public interest. It is, and has always been, good for all of America. Let's stay devoted to the public interest. We are asking, and we are public safety proud." I strongly urge the committee to support Bill 7208 for the benefit of our wonderful communities and dedication to our union employees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the committee? Seeing none, we thank you for your time and your testimony this morning.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Ian McDonald, followed by Lisa Glazer, followed by Greg Daniels. Is Ian McDonald with us? Oh, there you are, sorry, you are on the Zoom, and let me just... There he is. So Mr. McDonald, you should be ready to go, so if you could just unmute and turn on your video whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Is there a video?
No.
Hi, I'm not sure if the video is working. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, I apologize for that. Yeah, thank you Chairs Flexer and Blumenthal, and happy to have the opportunity to testify today. So yeah, two bills I'd like to mention today. The first that I support is HB 7206, that would kind of create greater ability to participate by the Office of Consumer Counsel inciting council proceedings. It would also give greater light to some of the lobbying activities vis-à-vis those proceedings. I'll just say generally, you know, there's a lot of consternation, as I'm sure all of you know, about kind of around electricity costs and bills. I have formally said on ISO New England Consumer Liaison Group Corning Committee with, with some members of the Consumer Council and, and other consumer advocates from around New England. I know a lot of, this is an opportunity to really kind of shed a little bit more light on what's happening in terms of some cost issues, particularly, I know it's another bill, but as we get into the asset condition projects. So I think, you know, they're, they're very dedicated and very earnest, and, and I think they do a great job, and I think bringing them into the fold and also creating a little more accountability on lobbying is key. And I also like to say my support on S J 16. You know, I will say that, you know, I think history is complex, but I don't think our history just starts at 1776. I think most of us, myself included, enjoy celebrating Thanksgiving, and, and I don't think we say that's not our history, that, that is our history too, even for those of, like myself, who are largely immigrant, you know, families who weren't here. But I do think that while we can talk about some of the amity and good relations that happen maybe around certain aspects of that, I know that's a very complicated history, but some of that's true. It's also true, a lot of the brutality that occurred in the wake during and in the wake of the Pequot War. And this was in fact, a watershed moment for kind of a crossing of the Rubicon in terms of brutality vis-à-vis the Native American community in, both in Connecticut and in our country. And it is pretty critical history, it needs to be talked about more, not to make all of us feel guilty and put on a hair shirt, but because it is history. And just like in the Soviet Union where history was erased because it was, you know, inconvenient or made people feel, you know, bad about certain leaders or things, I don't think we want to do that. I, I think this is important, this is a very important event. I didn't know about it. I took AP US History, I took history twice, regular history, then AP History. I don't know that I knew about the Pequot War. I think we obviously need to have a lot more awareness about this. And yeah, I fully support that and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Perfect timing. I think you may have a question from Senator Flexer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. Thank you for your testimony this morning, and I particularly appreciate, well, I appreciate all of your comments and your comments towards the end there about understanding the full grasp of our history. And right before your time limit came, you talked about what you did and did not learn in history, and I wondered, in history classes, and I wonder if you could elaborate on that a little bit more.
Yeah, well, I mean, first of all, you know, we don't necessarily dip that much into Connecticut history. So I think, you know, we worry about people leaving our state. I will say, having Connecticut history be kind of a black box is not great for people kind of having a better sense of place. But I also think that when we have conversations about, we had a lot of, you know, this is not as much of a, I'll just say this, you know, we had a lot of students who were Native American, whether probably largely Narragansett, Nittmuck, who weren't necessarily out there talking about that openly, but I've kind of learned since then. And I think, I don't know that I heard any Nittmuck history, or Narragansett history, or very little Pequot history, or anything else. And, and I had, you know, people who I'm going to school with, who are from those communities. And I think that's, I find that very troubling. I think all of our place names are coming from this period. You know, we haven't erased all those. We haven't, you know, so, and I think this is part of the fabric of Connecticut's history. And I think we can't just, you know, sanitize it and pretend like horrible things that happened didn't happen. That doesn't make the good things that happened not happen. You know, a lot of my family is from Brooklyn. We had one of the biggest slaveholders in Connecticut in Brooklyn, Godfrey Malbone. We also had a prominent abolitionist, Samuel May. So I think just because you're learning these, some of the terrible things that happened, it's not to make everybody feel guilty, but it is to have a grounding reality of, of our history and, and how it's affected different members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that answer, and I really appreciate that insight. It's hard to, in the days leading up to St. Patrick's Day, which is a day when I get to celebrate a large portion of my heritage, it's interesting to hear your reflections about classmates that perhaps we shared, who never got to talk about their heritage in a way that I get to talk about my heritage and have my whole life with pride, although there were some traumatic things that happened that perhaps weren't spoken about as openly in that heritage as well over the course of history, but how we can change over time. And, and having to wait decades to have people that you've known for decades be able to speak clearly about their heritage, and it was right in our backyard, right, that they are from Eastern Connecticut, and you didn't know that as a child, and they weren't openly sharing that information, and perhaps they didn't know much about it as a child. Is that one of the reflections you've gotten from those former classmates that maybe they didn't even know about it?
Yeah, and, and I think, you know, I'm certainly sympathetic to folks who say, you know, I don't know much about this history, and I, and I think a lot of us have had to bootstrap our learning or have learned later in life. And I think that includes members of that community who might not have known some of these things. I think there's probably more awareness, and a lot of that, the work of the museum and, and the tribe, Pequot Tribe has probably changed some of that, but I, I think that's, that's absolutely the case, and it, it puts people in a place of, oh, they're just complaining. Oh, they're just making this up. Oh, this didn't happen. And I think that erasure is, is a problem. And I do think it's important to tell a full story and try to get to, you know, historical understanding wherever you can, but I, I also think everybody in Connecticut deserves to have their, you know, their history, you know, accurately reflected, and this is certainly a key part of it, so, yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you again for your time and your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Further questions to the committee? Representative Menapease.
Hey, I just, I kind of want to just reiterate what Senator Flexer said on this, and I really appreciate you bringing up that perspective. I am a history teacher. We actually talked a little bit about this yesterday in the Education Committee, and I do think it's very important, as you said, we often kind of gloss over a lot of Connecticut history, and the Pequot War is a very big part of that, that I think a lot of people are not familiar with, and bringing these types of things to attention is very important. And I'm very glad to hear your testimony on that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions?
I actually have one.
Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Blumenthal.
I'm sorry, so...
Grabbing some mic difficulties here, or apologize.
Mr. McDonald, I was interested to hear about your service related to ISO New England, and I was wondering with regard to the siting council bill, if you have any insight into how other states in ISO New England handle approval or disapproval of, of projects, you know, analogous to the ones approved or disapproved by the sitting council, and how we, how we compare to those other states and what we could do to improve those processes?
So, so I'm, I am not going to pretend to be an expert at all, you know, there's, it gets, it gets complicated fast in terms of the, the, the range of kind of how they're kind of citing in the different states, and I've kind of have as much as I can do to figure out what's going on in Connecticut. But what I will say is that there, there was pretty, there was pretty universal concern that I was hearing from other consumer advocates about how, you know, this is more maybe related to the asset condition projects, but just overall how there was potentially gold plating happening vis-à-vis, you know, different projects and transmission projects. And while we know that there's probably needs to be, you know, increased transmission, certainly as we, you know, have moved towards maybe electrification, I think it's, there's definitely a feeling that these things are a bit of a black box, and they're all stressed out about, you know, they don't feel like they have a very strong means to kind of look out for their ratepayers on these costs. And, and I think this is, this is likely, citing council is, is likely the mechanism, one of the mechanisms to do that. I know there's some limitations in terms of perks jurisdiction, but um, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm not more helpful in terms of the other procedures on that, but I don't know if that was helpful at all.
No, it's fine. I appreciate both your perspective and your honesty about its limitations. You know, I certainly share the concerns that you voiced about these projects. You know, it certainly seems that there's an imbalance in resources and information, and I think there's very low confidence in, on behalf of the public right now, in whether the projects and the costs that we're all paying for them are all well justified and in the best interests of our energy future. And so I think an increased role for the Consumer Council, increased information sharing could contribute to that as, as you indicated. So appreciate your testimony, and are there further questions from the committee? Seeing none, we thank you for being with us and for contributing your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Next up is Lisa Glazer, followed by Greg Daniels, followed by Joseph Feldman. Is Lisa Glazer with us? I do not see Lisa Glazer either on the Zoom or in person. So next up, we have Greg Daniels, who is on the Zoom. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead then. Someone is maybe imitating you on the Zoom. We won't let them in. Whenever you're ready, you may begin. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Good morning, Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, distinguished members of the G A Committee. My name is Greg Daniels. I'm the Executive Director of the State Contracting Standards Board. On behalf of the board, I sincerely thank the committee for bringing forward this crucial legislation for your steadfast bipartisan support of the State Contracting Standards Board, and this is Senate Bill 1499, and I'm testifying in support of that bill. The bill contains some very supportive language in which provides, strengthens the oversight of the state contracting agencies, and I will highlight some of that in a moment. But for your convenience, I provided the committee with, with our testimony, a copy of our annual audit report, my triannual audit report, as well as a copy of our annual staff report to give you a sense of what we've accomplished over the past year. We've made some great accomplishments, but with respect to the bill, there are several areas that I'd like to talk about and why it's important. First, Senate Bill 1499 provides a safeguard with respect to our funding on our budget request this year. With respect to Senate Bill 1499, Section 1 speaks to giving the Executive Director vital input into the budget request and working with O P M to, to, to submit that recommendation to O P M and having more input over that, like the other state, other watchdog agencies. For example, the F O Y Commission, as well as Office of State Ethics. So, so our, our budget ask would be safeguarded as opposed to, as, as, as this current fiscal year, we've had to rely on the proposed biennial budget in that instance, so. Second, our notice of, Senate Bill 1499 requires with respect to notice of contractors and bidders rights in solicitations currently, it is the practice of state contract, state solicitations, it's the practice of state contracting agencies to include in their bids notices regarding contractors' rights to appeal to...
Wow. If, if you could summarize the remainder of your testimony?
Well, contractors' rights to appeal to our, our agency if they, they feel that they're aggrieved in some way, and we would like that to be statutorily memorialized as opposed to just be a practice.
Thank you, Executive Director Daniels. Are there questions from the committee? Representative Mass Francesco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for coming in, appreciate your testimony. I want to just kind of go back to, you were started to talk about the different sections of the bills, maybe just kind of ask you a couple of questions, but you, on section one that you mentioned, it was about the budget process, so exactly what is it that we're trying to accomplish here with that section?
Sure, with that section currently, and I'm sorry, I fumbled a bit there.
That's okay.
But currently, we go through the typical budget process, which is you submit to O P M, O P M submits our budget through the governor's process, and, and what would happen under Section 1 of 1499, as proposed under the legislation, is we would submit our budget to O P M, our budget ask, and the O P M Secretary would take our suggestion and... would um take our suggestion and um adopt it based on our, our need, which is very conservative.
So, so if I'm understanding you correctly, the OPM would take your recommendation of your budget without changes. In other words, they would not be able to alter that?
They would be able to work with us and alter it, yes.
They would be able to. So it's, so how would that play in with the, with the governor's budget or appropriations when they put their budget up? Would that amount be able to be increased or decreased through those departments, through the governor's office or appropriations? Or whatever is submitted by OPM they have to take?
I don't think that um.
I'm confused.
I, I, it's, that's a, it's actually a good question.
Yeah, are, sorry, just to clarify.
It was a little confusing the way they was explaining it. So maybe somebody can clarify it for me, just what we're trying to achieve.
Well, if we could just, yeah, clarify the question. Representative, are you describing um the current uh practice or what the bill would?
Yes, I want to know what the current, you, you explain to me what the current practice is. I want to know what the difference is in the particular bill that you're referring to. And I think the difference is that you said that you would be working with OPM to draft your budget?
So we would, but we currently work with OPM to draft the budget, but we would make that, we would work with the Secretary of OPM to make the recommendation. Um, we would make the recommendation as to what our budget is to the Secretary of OPM, and they would um accept or we would work.
Or reject?
Back forth or reject. Well.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Can they reject? You know what I mean? That's what I'm trying to figure out, is accept or reject or no?
Um, it's my understanding it would be, we would have some protections similar to the other um um uh watchdog agencies. So it would be very much like the other watchdog agencies.
Okay. Tha- thank you for that. Thanks for, for clarifying. I was a little confused. And then, um, and you kind of got cut off a little bit, your time was up. Can you just kind of elaborate on that last section that you were talking about?
Oh, sure, regarding notice.
Section two or section three you were starting to talk about?
Um, notice of contractor and bidder's rights?
Yeah.
Oh, yes. Um, so currently, um, contractors and bidders, when they're um, when they're uh, when bids or solicitations are submitted, um, um, normally, if you've, if you submit, if you're contesting, um, um, normally you have a right to, to appeal to the State Contracting Standards Board. Um, and some agencies like DAS, we have a good working relationship with DAS. Um, they, they typically include that notice um as a practice, but not every agency does that. And so the, the, the idea here is that we want to make sure that um that's included in all solicitations. As a, not just as a practice, but as um, as a, as a rule, as, as, as a standard. Um, it is a best, best practice, um, uh, but we want to make sure that that's part of the um, the, the, uh, a standard um rule, um, and we have not seen that.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for, for clarifying that. Um, it's, it's a large bill. There's a lot of information.
There's a lot.
And I'm sure I, I will be obviously reviewing it more in detail, and if I have any questions, I can certainly talk to you offline on that. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many further questions right now?
Thank you, Representative. Senator Flexer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your uh testimony here today and your work on this legislation. Um. This committee has looked at legislation uh concerning the Contracting Standards Board for, for many years now. And um I have a few questions related to efforts in the past and how the legislation before us today has evolved. And I specifically, um, the conversation you were just having with Representative Master Francesco in terms of your budget process. How did your budget um come to fruition this year? What did you ask for? And what did, what did the governor propose? And um, I know there was um some slowness in the past in making appointments to your board. Has that been rectified? Um, and have there been any, any changes um in terms of the limitations that members of your board have in speaking openly and publicly? I know there was a proposal that quickly died. I want to make sure it's still dead.
Well, uh.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but I think it's important for this to be discussed publicly.
Sure. Um, so I'll take that in um multi-part.
Okay.
So first, with respect to the budget, uh, we initially asked for, I believe it was uh eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-six and eight hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-seven. Um, and what we were actually um allocated was, I believe it uh seven hundred and sixty-six thousand for both years. Um, so um roughly a difference of a hundred and, I think, eleven thousand or so, something of the sort. Um, so there, uh, big, big difference, and it cuts not only into our operating costs, but into salaries as well. So a big shortfall.
Okay, and you have a fully functioning board, correct?
We have a very active board.
Great.
Very active board.
And you're fully staffed, but looking at some potential limitations on that?
Yes, we are.
Depending on the way the budget moves forward?
Correct.
Okay.
And so it's been very um challenging um looking forward, at least prospectively. We've uh, we've got our annual audit, um, triannual audit program up and going. We're very happy about that. Our education program has been um booming. We've got um members from the APA who have signed up, staff uh from the APA who've signed up to take the course. Um, DAS, forty-two staff members from there. Um, and so it's, things are really exciting, but um tragically, um, with no funding, um scary at the same time.
And what kind of difference would it make if those kinds of um cuts couldn't be proposed? And you could just focus, I mean, just to give some history to some of our newer members of the committee. It's taken a long time to get a fully functioning, fully staffed Contracting Standards Board in place. Almost a decade and a half um for you to be doing the work that you're finally doing now. And I think you're doing a, a, a great job, and I'm grateful for the job that you're doing. But the fact that it took as long as it did to get this body and this or agency to do its job. The fact that you now have to be distracted and continually have to be distracted by cuts from the executive branch that perhaps don't enjoy such a strong watchdog agency is incredibly frustrating. And so um how does the proposed cut limit what you're um looking to do this year? Is it making staff members question whether they should stay? Is it limiting your ability to hire if there's a vacancy?
It, it is challenging. It is very challenging for our staff. Um, they're, they're very committed. Um, and they would not be here um if they didn't believe in what we do. Um, so it is very challenging on the staff.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Representative Osborne.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you so much for being here today and explaining this legislation. And I appreciate the dialogue you just had with Senator Flexer um to educate me as a new member of this committee um on the history of how we got to where we are. Um, there are a lot of things about this legislation that, that I appreciate. I know some contractors in my district in particular, uh, will appreciate some of the clarifications to that process. Um, but I, I have to say that um I am very mindful right now at this moment in history of, of the separation of powers that we have uh in our form of government and of the checks and balances that, that we have put in place from one branch of government to another. Um, and I have some concerns that uh this legislature acting as one branch of the government um could pass legislation that might impinge upon the um independence of another branch of government. And it, it could go both ways. It could be the executive impinging upon the legislative branch, and I, I would have that same concern. I can't imagine why. Um, but in, in this particular instance, I can think of a lot of areas of the budget that there are good and noble and, and what your agency is doing is so important. Let me stress that. Um, but there are a lot of very good and noble costs in our budget. And I can think in particular of the many, many conversations I have had with my municipalities and the, the lack of the fully funded special education costs of our, of our excess cost grants and, and, and the like. Um, and, and I can imagine that almost every recipient of any budget in, at any procurement in, in our budget would certainly like to have a provision that says, hey, you don't get to override this particular concern. Um, can you speak to um how, how this would be more fair for you and less fair for, say, our municipalities, less fair for anybody else coming to the legislature, coming to the executive and asking for funding? Thank you through you, Mr. Chair.
It's a good que, great question. How it would be more fair for me or for the board?
For your agency, for your board to, to have a, a, not a get out of jail free card, but to have, to have a, a blank check to write for their agency, right? Every municipality in this state would love to say, hey, fully fund my special education costs. Fully, every, every nonprofit, every, every agency, the judicial branch, my goodness, you know, I'm an attorney and I practice in court. And I can tell you that there are many, many unfunded needs in our judicial branch that affect the lives of the people I represent every single day. There are needs that go unmet for sure. Why should your entity be the one that gets to put up its budget and not have it um amended or reduced in, in any way by the governor?
Well, I can speak under my leadership. I can, I can, I can't speak beyond that. Um, but I've been very, very conservative in my approach. I understand our mission. And I understand that it's very important to um lead with a very lean approach to not only budgeting, but also um as a steward of public funds. Approaching, um, so our budget is very, very lean. Uh, we don't ask for much. We spend very little. Um, and we're very, very aware of the fact that we're, we're um, as a staff, um, that we're, we're very lucky to be here. This, this agency has not had staff in a very, a very long time, for a very long time. So I'm very cognizant of the fact that um this, this body has helped to, to get us here. Um, and so um I, every year um since I've been here, I've been very conscious about every dime that we spend um and whether or not it's going towards the mission of this agency. So um I can speak that under my leadership, I'm not attempting to um misuse or miss or spend money frivolously or um and and, and, and working with the board, that's the intent now. Um, again, um, I can't speak beyond that. Um, if another director came in and um, but that is my goal um as a leader of this agency um to keep that. So.
Well, thank you very much, and I, I appreciate your, your efficient leadership of, of your agency. Um, I'm a huge fan of Six Sigma and Lean Efficiency in Government. Uh, so I'm always happy to hear that from anybody appearing before us, and I, I thank you for the important work you're doing. Um, and no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none. I actually, I'll just have a one quick one. Uh, I guess it's a, a two-parter. Um, one, um how often do you find uh the board in positions where it's taking, I guess, an adverse decision or position to the governor or someone else in the executive branch's decisions? And the other is um OPM made uh entered testimony opposing this bill. I was wondering if you had a chance to review it? Um, and if so, if you had any response to their opposition?
Well, I think, well, first part of the question, uh, I think it's natural to, to have opposition. I think it's healthy in a democracy, and that's just, it's, it's what it is. But I have not had an opportunity to read OPM's uh opposition and was made aware that they would be opposing um the bill. Um, but that's, that's par for a democracy. It is what it is. Um, but um I will circle back and read it. Uh, we've been very, we're, we're a small agency, so we have a lot happening. So I have not um had an opportunity to read the bill yet. Um, well, their testimony yet, but I will do that um when we get back to the office.
Appreciate that. Um, and we would certainly um appreciate, there's a, you know, they, they um state opposition for, to several sections of the bill for several reasons, and um we would appreciate your perspective reacting to their reasoning.
And we can, we can get back to you with uh with statements in, in response to theirs. We're happy to do that.
Thank you very much. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none, we thank you for your time and your testimony and your service to the state.
Thank you.
Next up is Joseph Feldman, followed by Kathy Flaherty, followed by Senator Austin.
Good morning, Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, and members of the Government Administration Elections Committee. My name is Joe Feldman, and I'm the president and founder of the non-for-profit Cover My Mental Health. And I'm here today to speak in favor of House Bill seven two zero seven concerning mental health parity. Cover My Mental Health provides resources to help patients, their families, and clinicians overcome insurance obstacles to mental health and substance use disorder care. Among the most valuable resources we provide are template letters for medical necessity. A medical necessity letter can be helpful when a clinician's determination of the appropriate care for their patient is denied by an insurance company. So why, why does that happen? Well, clinicians are taught first do no harm, the twenty-five-hundred-year-old Hippocratic oath. They're taught to use safe and effective treatments, and they're taught and they practice using generally accepted standards. Insurers agree to pay for medically necessary treatment, but who decides what is medically necessary? So on the list of what I mentioned that clinicians are taught, you notice is not medical necessity. It's a legal term. And when there's a difference between medical necessity as defined by an insurer and generally accepted standards, well, that's when patients are at risk of being denied access to care that they need for treatment and recovery. And when a clinician asks an insurer, on what basis is the care not medically necessary? We don't necessarily know. And why is that? Because there's not an obligation to disclose the standard for their decision-making. Now, I've heard insurers discuss that they are not permitted to disclose the standards that they might license from for-profit organizations. Uh, and these are standards that those for-profit corporations have said are based on generally accepted standards. So first of all, those generally, those public, those for-profit corporation standards may be modified by an insurer for any individual plan, so they're not necessarily all the same. And why would we use a standard that is sort of kind of like the real standard, generally accepted standards? Why not use generally accepted? And if insurers are not going to use generally accepted standards, the least they can do as proposed in House Bill seven two zero seven is share with us the standards that they are using. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you this morning. I have submitted written testimony and am pleased to support this legislation.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there questions from the committee? Seeing none, uh, we thank you for your time and your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Kathy Flaherty, followed by Senator Austin, followed by Senator Lesser.
Uh, good morning, Representative Blumenthal.
Good morning, Representative Blumenthal, Senator Flexer, members of the committee. My name is Kathy Flaherty and I'm the Executive Director of Connecticut Legal Rights Project. We're a statewide nonprofit that provides legal services to adults with serious mental health conditions. We are also a member of the Connecticut Parity Coalition, working to ensure that all residents can access and receive equitable behavioral health insurance coverage. And I'm also an individual who relies on employer-sponsored health insurance coverage for access to behavioral health care. I too am here in support of HB 7207, an act concerning the disclosure of insurer reports concerning mental health parity as a public record. Currently, under current law, the Insurance Department has to keep the names of the insurance companies confidential and this bill would increase transparency and accountability. Mental health parity is something we've all been fighting for, for a very long time and we continue to see reports that there are, at the very least, warning signs demonstrated in a recent report by the Office of Health Strategy that showed that four of the seven commercial insurers showed those warning signs. That's something that should be investigated further. And making those reports that the insurance companies are required to submit to the Insurance Department public records means that everyone will be able to review that data and people who are advocates, who are researchers, may be able to make recommendations for how to improve parity compliance and it will help to ensure that mental health parity is not just an illusory promise, but actually a reality for all people because as you said before, mental health care is health care and it should help to address gaps and improve access to care. So I encourage the committee to move 7207 forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Flaherty. Are there questions from the committee? Seeing none. I, I have one question for you. Can you think of any reason why these records should not be public as a public policy matter?
As a public policy matter, no. I mean, I, I do understand that there are some things in, in the reports that they may claim are proprietary and, you know, therefore should be kept private. But if these are reports on parity compliance ultimately, if there is not a problem with parity compliance, they should not be afraid to stand behind their reports of what their companies are doing.
Well, I certainly agree with you on, on both of those points and, and I can't think of a reason why they shouldn't be public either. And I'm a little disappointed that we didn't get any testimony written currently and I don't see anyone on the list from any of the insurance companies because I would have appreciated the opportunity to ask them this question. I know that this was something that they've indicated they care about, but I would want to know the public policy basis, why we should continue this policy of not having insurers stand behind their reports when they're claiming that they're following the law, but we're hearing reports that that's not the case. So I appreciate your time and your testimony. This issue is vitally important and the, the status quo is, is simply unacceptable. So I'm hopeful that this, this measure may help some, shed some light on it and help us make better public policy. Thank you very much and appreciate your time and your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up is Kathy Austin, followed by Matthew Lesser, followed by James Murray.
It's still morning. I didn't want to say good morning if it wasn't really morning anymore. So good morning, everybody. I appreciate being in front of you today and I appreciate to be, the opportunity to be able to provide testimony on Senate Joint Resolution Number 16 and I also am in support of House Bill Number 6040. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Treaty of Hartford was, which was signed on September 21st in 1638 between the English colonists inhabiting Connecticut and the Narragansett and Mohegan tribes and the Pequot War. As a result, the extermination of the Pequot culture identity began. The treaty prohibited the tribes from returning to their cultural lands, abolished the use of their tribal names and forced the integration of the two tribes. In addition, the remaining members of the Pequot tribe were sold into inhumane and immoral practices of slavery or they were brutally and barbarically maimed and murdered. It is, in my opinion, of utmost importance that we as a state and a governmental institution recognize and condemn the actions induced by the language of this treaty, which was repeated over and over again across the United States as we populated this country and our treatment of indigenous people, which I think cannot be minimized. Connecticut is well-known as an area where we started our bad treatment of indigenous peoples. We, we have rarely taken accountability for that and rarely worked to change that. As a matter of fact, it was until the 1960s when we allowed Native Americans to vote. These are things that we did over and over again. If you look, look at the barbaric treatment of children that were removed across this United States, not just in the Northeast, but across this United States, on what we did by removing children from their families to indoctrinate them in a, in a culture that was not theirs. That is not something that we should accept. This resolution would greatly benefit Connecticut tribal relations and take an important step forward in attempting to right wrongs of the many people before us by condemning the provisions of the Treaty of Hartford that sought to eliminate the Pequot cultural identity. I also wanted to just speak very shortly about the bill that is looking at developing a process on statues around the state Capitol. And I am requesting that the statue of John Mason that currently adorns the Capitol facade be taken down and moved to the Old State House Museum where it can be part of an educational exhibit where the full context of his role, not only as one of Connecticut's founders, but his leadership of the massacre at Fort Mystic in 1637 and his authorship of the 1638 Treaty of Hartford can be displayed. Thank you very much. You have my testimony.
Thank you, Senator.
Open to questioning.
Questions from the committee? Senator Flexer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Senator. Thank you for your testimony today. I just wanted to ask you to elaborate a little bit more on the House bill that you testified on. You were an advocate for the removal of the Mason statue and the process that ensued. I just wondered if you have some more detailed reflections on this proposal and how moving forward, there'd be a structure in place that would be very different than, than the experience you had with your advocacy in the, in recent years?
Well, this would allow us to have a process on how we would put, I know, but put, put any other statues around the Capitol. I've also done the research or had the research done. I personally didn't do the research, obviously, but had the research done on every statue that's around our state Capitol today. I asked my staff to send it to the committee so that you can be prepared to answer questions on what are the, how each statue was decided. Relative to what happened with John Mason, the legislature voted to take the statue down, but there was a process here that leadership in both, in all four caucuses gets to weigh in on anything that happens. And also the Capitol Preservation and Restoration Committee, which I sit on now, really as a result of this one issue, can look at this. And the recommendation was to continue to review the process that we would have John Mason up there. And we have to get all four caucuses in some, we have to have two of the caucuses, the majority caucuses, no matter what the party, whatever the majority is at the time, agree to take a statue down or change a policy or practice within the confines of the Capitol Building. And one member of the minority party and we've, I've been less than successful to convince people that not honoring someone who was responsible for committing genocide, knowing that the two tribal nations that sided with the English, both have said to me that they would like to see John Mason come down and both have said to me that they'd like to see some sort of rescinding of the Treaty of Hartford. So this process, to your original question, would be much better and allow a more inclusive process in how statues go up and whether or not they should stay there and not just honoring people without an explanation.
Thank you. And I forgive me for putting you on the spot. When was John Mason alive?
He was alive in the 1600s. He is an Englishman who came over to Connecticut and, or came over to, to this land, was in Connecticut at the time. Connecticut is actually a native name and he was responsible for the policies on how we treat indigenous people. Uncas said, "We went too far." That was his statement. Mason has said in his writings, in his writings, that he was abolishing the Pequot people. It was not something that was done based on a verbal interpretation of history. This was in writing. His own writings are, are horrific and should not be there. And, and I would say to anybody that ever comes to this Capitol, no one has ever heard that history of Mason or any of the other statues that sit on our Capitol. That is not a place to learn history. That is supposed to be a place of honor where we respect the people that are up there because they exemplify our state's morals and values. That, that's why I continue to fight so hard to remove the John Mason statue.
And just to clarify, the entirety of Mason's life was before the United States of America was a thing, before the Declaration of Independence and before this state of Connecticut was a entity. But John Mason's statue is on this state Capitol.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none, I have one more question, which is, and again, not to put you on the spot, but do you have any knowledge about how the decision was made to put the John Mason statue up on the Capitol?
I've, I've done a lot of review of the, of the history. He came on much later than the other statues. It was not done when all the other statues were, were put up. He was a standalone decision that was made well after everything else. There is nothing in writing on, that I have been able to find on why he alone exemplifying that timeframe was decided to be put up there. So it is interesting that, that that happened and when it happened and it was completely divorced of any real legislative process, at least from the review that I have done and had, and I've asked the Office of Legislative Research to, to do. That's how we found the one article that said that it was going up from the Hartford Current as a matter of fact.
Well, thank you for that answer and I think that answer in itself is a strong recommendation for this bill, you know? It would be much, we'd be in a much better position to review the appropriateness of that statue and every other statute if there were a record created by historians and other professionals about why that statue was put up in the first place. And, you know, I think this process could first of all, set us on the, the right path for the statues that exist and the statues in the future, but if nothing else, it'll just create a record of why, what we did, we did. And, and future generations will be able to better evaluate the rightness, wrongness, well-thought-ness of those decisions.
Thank you. And, and to be very clear, I'm not interested in not knowing history. That's why I think the statue needs to come down. We don't know history by honoring somebody that we have no knowledge of why he is up there. We have no knowledge. If we put it at the, the Old State House, there could be, there could actually be a teaching moment that would, that would say, this is what happened and, and this is the record of this particular person.
Thank you very much, Senator. Are there further questions from the committee? Oh, looks like you have one from Senator Sampson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And I'm sorry, I wasn't going to interject. You know, this is conversation for debate, as you pointed out earlier, and not so much for, you know, fact finding. I, I just, you know, I'm listening to the conversation and I just wanted to point out, you know, that a simple Google search will, will tell you certain things. I mean, you know, the reason why I think John Mason is on our state Capitol building is because, in fact, he was deputy governor of the Connecticut Colony. Now, of course, that was during English rule. It had nothing to do with the current state of Connecticut or the, as, as a member state of the United States of America, but the state of Connecticut did pre-exist in the United States of America. And, you know, it's, it's like, it's, it's very interesting to me. On one hand, we're concerned about the fact that this person should be on our Capitol Building because he wasn't, you know, you know, alive during the time of the United States, but yet we need to make this declaration about his behavior, even though it has nothing to do with the United States and Connecticut as it is now. I, I just, I, I wanted to make sure I put that on the record just based on the conversation that you guys had and I am looking forward to this debate. I'm going to read up on this whole subject because I don't think that this is as clear as it's being described. I, I understand that people have strong opinions on it, but there are many people that I'm reading online that would say that John Mason saved the Connecticut Colony because the Pequots were attacking innocent colonists. Now, I don't know the facts of those, those details, but certainly he was instructed to go and attack the Pequot, the Pequot Colony based on, you know, to, as, as a counterattack. You know, th- this is the kind of thing that really I, I still fail to see why the Connecticut General Assembly in 2025, in our GAE Committee, which has tremendous things we need to address. We got, you know, fraud in elections in Bridgeport. We, we, you know, there, there are countless issues that matter and to tackle this highly politically charged issue, I just want to express my objection too. And that's it. Thank you for giving me the couple of seconds to say that, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, may I, may I respond inclined? So, and I appreciate what Senator Sampson has said and, and I always enjoy his debates. So I look forward to the debate on the floor of the Senate. But I have read up on this. I know what happened. It did not mean that we should murder more than 400 men, women and children and that we should express genocidal intent. Nothing in the record forwarded that to this, to this burgeoning new country is something that we should always speak out against. I'm a Vietnam-era person. I'm very well aware of genocide that has happened around this world and I always look to make sure that we are not accepting that genocide and that's what happened here. And so I, I, I'm hopeful that Senator Sampson and I sometime can sit down and talk about this, but I have done a lot of research about this issue. So I appreciate all of you taking time and I do agree that you have important things to discuss. I think this is important also and we have great bandwidth.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just, I just ask one question of the good chairman of the Appropriations Committee. It's like, so this is a, even if we accept the version of the facts that you've described, which I, I'm not arguing with you, you, you sound like you have much more research and have, understand it much more thoroughly than I do. And, you know, the, the gentle lady that came before us earlier today to describe, you know, her views as, as the chairwoman of the, of the Pequot Tribe. I, I certainly respect all of that, but are you suggesting that, that any terrible act that occurs outside of the realm of the state of Connecticut as we currently sit in it right now deserves to be, you know, remembered as far as a resolution that we've got to pass in the legislature to take a position on? I, I just don't see how it's related in to 2025 Connecticut. I'm certain that there were many more injustices that pre-existed the United States of America that happened on this exact land. Are we going to go back and are we going to, we discuss all of them? I know, I know we did witches. I know, I know we did witches. You know, another thing that I don't see the relevance to the GAE Committee, to the Connecticut Legislature, or the people of Connecticut currently. These are things for historians, people far more educated than you or I, frankly, on the subject of history should be debating and making those works known so that people can go back and review them. For us to be taking sides in these issues concerns me. So that's the question. Should we document every last transgression that happened prior to 1776? Because I'm sure I can go Google some things that happened in Connecticut and we can start to create more resolutions. Through you.
Thank you. I look forward to the debate with Senator Sampson on the floor of the Senate where that debate more properly belongs. I believe in all of us knowing a lot about history, all sides. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing no further questions, I appreciate your time and your testimony. Appreciate the conversation. I will just clarify for the viewing public, although the resolution condemns the Treaty of Hartford in which John Mason was involved. The statues issue is not one where we are making a decision or the bill makes a decision about John Mason himself or any particular statue, but would just set out a process for reviewing statues and statues that may be placed in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Next up is Senator Lesser, followed by James Murray, followed by Ben Shaken. I see that Senator Lesser is with us on the Zoom, and whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Yes. Good morning still, Chairs Blumenthal and Flexer and ranking members Sampson and Master Francesco and Honorable Members of the Government Administration Elections Committee. It's good to be with you again. I'm here to testify in support of Senate Bill 132, which simply decides to create a new review of the regulations adoption process. I think we all understand that the business of making laws in this state is complicated, and we have a role as legislators in passing laws, but that the regulations processes at least is important when it comes to the lives of our constituents, the people of Connecticut. And it's important that the legislature have oversight over that process. We have a system that was created in statute in the early 1970s. Some of it was put, some of it, but not all of it, was put into the state constitution in the early 1980s. But to my knowledge, there hasn't been a review of the regulations adoption process in a very long time. I don't think we're going to change the state constitution, but in terms of understanding how it works, you know, is there adequate oversight by the legislature and how it intersects with the laws that we passed? I think it would be really important and timely, and it makes sense to have a bipartisan review process that this bill would set up. So this bill is simply a task force to start the process, to start the conversation, and would encourage you to support it and would welcome any questions at this time.
Thank you, Senator. Questions from the committee? Representative Carpino.
Hello, Senator. It is a little strange to be questioning my own senator, but I have a couple of questions for you. Could you just tell me a little bit about what you're looking to oversee and perhaps analyze with this task force? As the second-time Chair of Reg Review, I'm interested to learn a little bit more.
I want to, first of all, it's good to see you, Representative, and I appreciate the question and sorry for looming over the room, but that's how it works here. First of all, I would lean on your expertise as the Chair of the Regs Review Committee and appreciate all of your service on that committee. I have actually never served on Regs Review. All I know is that I get a lot of questions about the Regs Review process, and when I was doing the review of how it works, it doesn't seem that there's been a lot of updating. There've been some tweaks over the years, but not a wholesale review since the early 1980s. And so I wouldn't prejudge it when say we need to go in any one particular direction, just that this is a really important process. You do important work on that committee and want to understand how that's working and there are ways that it could work better. But I don't, I don't think there's a specific goal in mind other than, you know, a general understanding this is a really important thing that we do, but doesn't get a lot of airtime in the legislature. Maybe it does on the Regs Review Committee, but it doesn't on the committees that I serve in.
Thank you for that, and I appreciate you not having any preconceived notions. I just, I get concerned when a bipartisan committee that works pretty effectively just has a vague proposal. I'm always interested to learn more, so, and we can talk offline, but I think it's important that the task force have some specific charges because it is such an important committee. We meet very proudly year-round and we're very transparent. So in the event that there are particular items in particular that you'd like this task force to look at, I'd be interested in learning more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none, Senator, we thank you for being with us, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you very much.
Next up is James Murray, followed by Ben Shaken, followed by Shannon Keefe. Is James Murray with us?
Yes, and I thank you for the chance to testify. I'm a member of the public, and I'm not accustomed to this, so I apologize in advance if I'm not following the correct protocol in some capacity. But I promise I'll be quick. I just wanted to voice as a member of the public and Joe Schmo that the proposed Bill 6011, which would promote transparency in the posting of the required reports that are issued to the legislative committees or bodies, I strongly support that. It's a common sense bill that would, well, it's a common sense action. I would say that the bill itself is not common sense in that it seems to me that this could be readily accomplished by administrative fiat tomorrow. And to the extent that the statute is necessary is somewhat disappointing, but I applaud the committee for taking this up and hope that you pass that along because it's a question of transparency and access to this information, information that the legislature in some capacity has deemed important enough to mandate continuing and a follow-up from the agency or the entity. And so I encourage the committee to advance this bill and to ensure that that information that is deemed legislatively important for some reason is available to the public. To the extent that it's possible to expand that, I would suggest that it may be easier and more efficient to have that posting centralized by the General Assembly or LCO, an entity that receives that, given that that would make this easier for the public, for the legislature, and for interested parties to access that information, and would promote the goal of this, which is ostensibly to ensure that whatever the legislature has charged with providing this information is able to do so and is accessible. I would hope that that's a revision that could be made, but to the extent it's not, the statute as proposed would be a welcome revision. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I think that's a very valid point and one we should be considering. Representative Carpino.
Thank you. I just want to point out that you're not a Joe Schmo. We're all the same here. Everybody's opinion and perspective matters, so I just wanted to say thank you. I tend to agree with you. This is not the only bill this committee is considering this session where I think as a General Assembly, we do a lot of good work, as do our agencies, but if the public can't access that information, perhaps it's not as valuable as it could be. So I just wanted to say thank you for your perspective. I think more of the public should become engaged, and your words matter in here, so thank you for giving us your time on this Friday.
Thank you, Representative. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none, we thank you for your time and your testimony. Next up is Ben Shaken, followed by Shannon Keefe, followed by Paul Palmer, Sr. Ben Shaken is on the Zoom, and whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I'm the last one who gets to say that to you. Apologies for not being there in person. I woke up with a scratchy throat this morning. My name's Ben Shaken. I'm the Director of Government Relations at the Connecticut Community Nonprofit Alliance. I've got three bills I'm going to try to cover today in my three minutes on your agenda. The first is that we support House Bill 7207, the bill related to mental health parity and the disclosure of insurer reports. I won't, I won't repeat what others have said. I would just add the perspective of community nonprofits, the community-based behavioral health providers that contract with the state. They are obligated through those contracts to serve, to serve people, to provide services regardless of their ability to pay. And that means when someone with commercial insurance who should be eligible for those services is denied, as we know happens and as multiple state reports have showed, that cost shifts to the state, not just by people moving on to the Medicaid program, but by the state subsidizing at least in part the programs that they provide. Secondly, we support House Bill 5422, which would reestablish the Legislative Program Review and Investigations Committee. We, this committee was founded in 1972, created in 1972, but sometime in the, in the 2013, 2015 timeframe, it was, it was defunded due to, due to state budget cuts. During its time, though, it published over 300 studies, including many valuable insights about the state's health and human services infrastructure. We spent a lot of our time here talking about legislative, legislative creative, created task forces, and their, their work and the legislature's desire to get more information. And I would just offer that the Program Review and Investigation Committee in its time served that role in a lot of ways and provided a lot of very valuable information about the state's human services infrastructure. And so we support reestablishing it. Then finally, Senate Bill 1499, the bill regarding the State Contracting Standards Board. I, we are opposed to a very specific, two lines of language in this bill in Section 11, specifically lines 597 through 599. When you look at those lines, it's a long bill. It seems like a minor addition of language across a bill that's adding and changing a lot of language related to the board. However, it would, in adding that language, it would incorporate the entire, the state's entire health and human services contracting system underneath the purview of the board. Current statutes, and since the board's inception, this, these services are managed by the Office of Policy and Management. They're not under the board's purview. In past years, including last year, the board's staff testified that they did not have the internal capacity to handle these, the addition of these contracts and the other work that this bill proposed. Given that, and given that we don't think the staffing in the board has gone up substantially since last year, we are really concerned that this language addition would slow the contracting process for community nonprofits to a near halt, which would be another unnecessary blow to those services at the time when the needs of Connecticut's residents are growing and their funding is not growing to keep pace with those needs. So we urge the committee to remove those, that language. Again, it's in five lines, 597 through 599 in Section 11, before you take action on the bill. And I thank you for your consideration. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the committee? Seeing none, we thank you for being with us today, sharing your testimony and not sharing your germs.
Thank you.
Next up is Shannon Keefe, followed by Paul Palmer, followed by Carol Rochelle. Good afternoon, Attorney Keefe. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good afternoon, Co-Chair Blumenthal and Flexer and distinguished committee members. I'm Shannon Clark Keefe of the State Elections Enforcement Commission, and I thank you for the opportunity to present testimony regarding House Bill 7205, which has to do with SEEK establishing a 2027 pilot program for public financing in certain municipalities. This is proving to be a turbulent legislative session for the SEEK. There's a proposal to expand our jurisdiction to include hundreds of special task districts for, with four new positions to help with the increased workload. There's a proposal to mandate that we complete all required audits within one year. We've testified that we would need two new positions to make this feasible. SEEK itself has again proposed to take over the campaign filing for all municipalities in the state starting in 2029 and have requested two additional positions to accomplish this. There's a proposal to strip us of our independence and to weaken the CEP, Connecticut's Public Financing Program, which until now has served as a nationwide model. Additionally, we, like all agencies and departments, received a memo on March 7th from OPM to curtail the refilling of our existing vacancies, which we desperately need to refill. Against this backdrop, there's a proposal to establish a pilot program for the public financing of campaigns in all the distressed municipalities in the state with populations of less than 25,000. This is to be done for the 2027 election without an increase in personnel or budget. While we applaud the intent behind this bill, unfortunately, we do not believe that it's feasible to accomplish at this time without damaging our ability to perform our core functions. Reallocating our scant resources in this way would be detrimental. SEEK is currently a small agency of 35 people, of which 32 positions are now filled, and the ability to refill the open positions is in serious doubt. SEEK is under immense pressure to move cases faster, complete audits faster, and award grants faster. Next year in 2026, due to the recent law change regarding gubernatorial grants, we'll be awarding more grants in greater amounts over a longer period of time than ever before. When comprehensive campaign finance reform was passed in 2005, SEEK staff was increased from approximately 14 people to 53. One of the first tasks of the newly grown agency was to implement the CEP and implement a pilot program for public financing of Connecticut municipalities. With our large staff, we were able to do this. It turned out that we only needed to do it for one municipality, and that report's on our website. Needless to say, we no longer have 53 people, and yet we have all of the same responsibilities. It's becoming increasingly clear that the next several years will present an unprecedented challenge to democracy itself across the nation and the world. Now is not the time to weaken one of the leading and most successful programs nationwide for getting big money out of politics. Now is not the time to destroy the independence of the watchdog agency charged with enforcing the integrity of elections. And now is not the time to redirect the agency from its core missions with a series of new programs and duties. We must therefore, at this time, oppose this bill. I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there questions from the committee? Representative Osborne.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for the work that you do. And this is a question I ask almost all people from all the agencies and state government right now, because I'm very curious, to what extent, you know, one of the things that AI does really, really well is analyze data. And a lot of what your core functions are is to analyze data during, during election season to see if particular contributions qualify. And I'm wondering to what extent your agency has investigated how AI can be deployed for efficiencies in your agency while also safeguarding the data that is submitted.
I'm so glad you asked that. We were just able to get a Director of IT in place, and he has come with all sorts of ideas for how to do that. We have an open position for an IT analyst three that we need to fill, and we were, we were starting to do that, and it's been frozen. In addition to using AIs to run the reports, to move the grants faster, to move the audits faster, we also wanted to, we had lots of plans to make new services available through ECRIS for the treasurers so that they can spot problems ahead of time and solve them. We wanted to help them with their outreach to their constituents so they could get the fixes in place before they ever came to us. And we think that if we can do all of that before 2026, we'll be able to provide a much, much better program. The problem is that we're not being allowed to replace that person. We just got our director in place, and we need time. So we can't be diverting resources to trying to do the 2027 municipal pilot program. We really would like to be able to get our people in place, get these things in place so that we can test them with the gubernatorials that will be coming in early and have them ready for everybody in 2026. But AI is absolutely a part of his plans if we can just get the people and the time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that insight, and thank you again for the work that you do. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you.
Thank you, Representative. Further questions from the committee? I had a couple of brief questions. One was, you mentioned bills to, proposals that would reduce or eliminate the independence of SEEK, and I was wondering if you could identify that for me?
It's 1405, and it's currently before the Oversight Committee.
Thank you for that information. Additionally, I guess my question is, for the proposal we have a force today, it sounds like your opposition stems from staffing and funding issues and your ability to put it into practice. It sounds like you don't have any objection to the bill as a policy proposal more generally. It sounds like you don't have any objection to the bill as a policy proposal, more generally?
And actually, we asked for our municipal, but our municipal filing program to be for 2029 as well. I know it's rare to do things so far out in advance, but we'd really like to do it well. And we'd like to have a chance to reach out and train people, and our work is cyclical. So to be able to know that it was happening and to have time to get it in place and make sure that it happened perfectly and seamlessly for people would be really helpful. 2020, everything seems to come really quickly, and 2029 will too. And maybe we could do that program in 2029 as well.
Fair enough. You've been heard on that. And, you know, I think the conversation you've had on, on staffing and the hiring freeze is also, I think, one we're interested in. We certainly don't think the governor had any ill intent on putting this in place, but it is, well, I'll speak for myself then. Without, without ascribing any ill intent to the governor or any staff, it is certainly having, having disruptive effects. And with another governor could pose institutional concerns about the viability or independence of those agencies. So we appreciate you bringing that concern before us. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you for your time and your testimony.
Thank you.
Next up is Paul Palmer, followed by Cara Rochelle, followed by Lucy Gilchrist. Mr. Palmer, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you could just turn on the microphone.
Pushed it. Anyway, thank you, Senator Flexer and Representative Blumenthal. My name's Paul Palmer. I'm a 60-year, 67-year resident of Connecticut, born in Hartford, and recently become a NAMI advocate. I'm in support of Bill 7207. I don't think I have a lot that can be added to all the voices that have already spoken in favor of this bill. But I'd just like to reiterate, it's important to keep insurance companies accountable and to have them publicly disclose reports to assure that there is parity and they are keeping up with their obligations for people in need of mental health services. I find it personally imperative to stand up for the people who sometimes cannot or have no voice of their own. This bill brings to light this issue, which is always a good thing. I'll leave you with the truism. It says, "The measure of a society is how it treats the weakest of its members." That's Thomas Jefferson. I would please ask you to support Bill 7207. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, we thank you for being here to share your testimony with us, and I trust that it is heard. Next up is Representative Cara Rochelle, followed by Lucy Gilchrist, followed by Brian Alexander.
Good afternoon. Happy Friday to my colleagues, to the esteemed members of the Government Administration Committee. I'm here today to testify in favor of HB 7208, which is an act concerning referenda on the state of municipal authorities or other assets or the privatization of municipal departments or functions. And I'm here really on behalf of my constituents, and also to highlight that this is an issue that is truly nonpartisan. We had a situation in my community where a, the Water Pollution Control Authority was sold off, and it was sold off despite the large public outcry by the vast majority of the residents in the community. While there was a public hearing and 100 residents showed up, which is a lot for a small town, all but one spoke against the sale, and yet it was pushed forward anyway. And in that instance, the residents were begging for a referendum. They were begging, "Just put it in the hands of the voters. Let them decide." And that was not done. And because of that, this was sold off, the horse is out of the gate, it's a done deal. And rates were doubled on multifamily homes for those, those sewer charges. And I get calls regularly and often asking why they did not have any ability to vote for themselves to make this large financial decision. And I wonder how this is really not a partisan issue. I've got copies here for anyone interested, what a court case from 2015, because this same issue happened in Stratford. And in Stratford, there was a bipartisan group of residents. They actually took the city to court, and the lawyer that represented this bipartisan group of residents was Ben Proto. And he represented the residents. He was able to show a 6,000-person petition that was signed by residents all across the community. And the court ruled with, this, this group of residents ruled in favor of the residents and said, "You must have a referendum." So there's precedent going back over a decade saying that when there's major financial decisions being made, there should be a mechanism. This bill is very important because this bill says that, it's set at a threshold that will not be abused. It's set saying currently that 10% of residents must sign, sign the petition in order to trigger a referendum, so it is not willy-nilly. I would actually argue and, and implore this committee to adjust the timeframe slightly, because 10% of electors is very high, and 30 days after a vote to, to sell is a short window of time. So I would say either A, drop it down to 5%, or B, lengthen the time period in which they, the residents have time to get those signatures. But across the state, the majority of towns have the ability to trigger a referendum. And unfortunately, it's not every town, and it, and it should be for the, for the, for the sake of democracy, for the sake of putting the power in the hands of the residents. If we're talking about hometown rule, this is truly hometown rules, letting the residents speak for themselves on an issue and doing it in a way as responsible so that it is a sweet spot of, of opening that avenue to people and doing it so that it's appropriately placed.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the committee? Senator Flexer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Representative. Thank you for your, your testimony. I have a few questions. I just wonder if you can detail how, and I really appreciate the example that you brought forward concerning Stratford and the experience there. How was what happened in Stratford different than what happened in your community?
So in Stratford, their charter has, and I don't know that, there was, there was some provision that they were able to use to sue the city to say that their, their charter was not being 100% followed. And there's, there's a quote in my written testimony, which was submitted online today from the judge, which says that the rights of the people to run their own government, control their own government, were, were not being respected when, when the administration in Stratford ignored the petition that was being filed. But they, they were able to, to point to parts of their charter. And in other communities, that, that provision does not exist. Your bill is great because it says that if the charter, if, if a town already has provisions that are at least at the same level or, or more permissive than, than this bill, that they can use their own charter. But my, my argument is that there should always be a provision and a mechanism so that residents can trigger this type of involvement and, and trigger a referendum when necessary to, to have a true voicing of the people.
And the size of your community, 5% versus 10%, brief estimate of what the difference is there?
So, so the reason why I'm making that argument is because of the facts of, of the time window to collect the signatures, right? And so while if you have a longer period of time, you can collect signatures, but if you don't have a grocery store you can stand outside of, a way to actually physically get to residents, then it can take a little longer to get those signatures, especially because these need to be actual true signatures, not an online petition, apparently. So it does require a bit of logistics for people to engage with their neighbors. So if it's going to be 10%, then I do think there needs to be a longer time span in order to get those signatures. And I do think that, or, or have a smaller threshold. But I do think there's a responsible middle ground. I think even with 5% in that timeframe, it is still, would require a good amount of grassroots movement to get that done. And we want to make sure that it's something that is, can't be abused, but is, but is also a reasonable sweet spot so people can, can work hard to achieve that.
Thank you. And what kind of assets are you looking to cover here? What kind of municipal assets? So like, would schools that have been closed for a number of years be covered in this, or would this be only different types of services?
So as the bill is currently written, it would be authorities and authorities, departments for privatization, or property that is not open space. You know, I, I am interested in working with members of this committee to sort what would be a reasonable standard. But I do think when it comes to high-value assets, right? Or, or, or something like the privatization of a department that would then covert people's jobs or eliminate people's jobs, that I think that that really should be in the hands of residents to decide when there's these major decisions that have financial implications for both the town as a whole and residents individually of that nature.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and your testimony. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. And I'll leave these with the clerk as well.
I think you may have an additional question or two.
Sure.
So, don't go anywhere. Representative Mass Francesco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Representative, for coming and appreciate your testimony. Yeah, I think this, this topic to me is pretty interesting. Like, I agree with it in some respect, but then I don't, right? So there's kind of a, a little bit of an overreach in this area for me, but I certainly can understand the frustration of the people in town when, when their body of government doesn't really do what they request. And I look at, so you, I believe you represent Stratford. What is the population there?
So I, I don't represent Stratford. I represent Ansonia and Derby. But Stratford is where, where there was the bipartisan lawsuit that Ben Proto headed up, which is why I wanted to bring that to your attention, is that this is truly a nonpartisan issue. And there's history of that, including in the courts. But I don't have their population. I know that my, my population in Ansonia is about 19,000. There's about 12, 13,000 people who are electors in town. So you're looking at trying to get, say, 10% would be 1,300 signatures in 30 days, which as you can, as I'm sure you're aware, is, is quite a lot, which is why I'm, I'm seeking for the committee to make some reasonable adjustments to that. That way, there's enough time to actually get signatures, you know, and do it in a, in a way that is, that is possible, because people work, right? People have day jobs.
Thank you. And was it, was it your town where the people were, came out to, to testify against the sale of the property? And I think, and it was your town, you said about 100 people came out?
There was about 100 people. All except for one spoke against it. And, and what I find, you know, what some residents have complained about is that the annual budget for the town had already built in $5 million in future anticipated revenue a year prior. And there was actually an interview done by a local organization, and a city official, the mayor, said on record that, that the money from the sale would be used towards that $5 million future anticipated revenue. So it would seem, at least, you know, on the surface, that they had been planning for a year to make this sale before the public hearing. I, I can't say for certain what was in the heads of everybody, but it certainly looks that way from some of the comments that were made publicly. And it's just a very sad situation. So there does need to be level of protection. I, I would argue that it was a bit of government overreach to not at least put it in the hands of the residents to vote on, you know, when there was such a request and outcry for that.
Yes, and I, and I certainly understand their frustration. And I'm wondering why, you know, there's other ways around it. And I, and I don't really like when the state gets involved and mandates that a town does a certain thing. I always believe in that the towns should certainly do, in some, most respects, to do the freedom to, to govern on their own, right? So you have 100 people coming out in opposition out of 19,000. Now, that's not really a lot of people compared to what the population is. But I can understand how a referendum, you'd get a question on the, on the ballot for them so they can understand it. But in still, in many of those cases, there's a very, very small turnout anyway. And it's not always the will of the people. It's because they, you know, people are busy. They, they're working, they're taking care of their families, and they don't really have time to get involved or they understand what's going on. Why not go and have the charter changed to allow for a referendum as opposed to having the state mandate it?
So part of why I love this bill is that it, it actually would not cost the, the towns any more money because it would be during the next municipal vote. So people would already, or the next, whatever the next election cycle is, right? So it would always be, if the residents meet the signature threshold, it would be on the ballot for the next election. So it would actually not cost the towns any money. And it, there would be guaranteed turnout at that point and time for the public to have that conversation and be more educated. And, and in a town like mine, 100 people turning up to a public hearing is, is exponentially higher than a typical public hearing. So it, it was eye-catchingly large in our area for that to happen. I'm sorry, I lost your question there.
Well, no, I was just, so, so this basically more is a more of a focus on your town and not every other town in the state. Because as you mentioned, that it's, it's no cost to the town, but it's going to be a lot of cost to the towns when people continually initiate, initiate a referendum for their town. So, but, but this particular reason that you're doing this is because it's for your town. And you want to get it on the next ballot, and it's not going to cost your town any money. Which I understand that. We don't, I don't want the towns to have to spend any extra money. But I also want to take into consideration all the other towns in the state, that how this could affect, and not just yours.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure we maintain a clean record. So if we could just, and this conversation is, 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 is good to go. I just want to make sure we maintain a clean record. So if we could just wait until the representative finishes the question, and then you'll begin your answer.
Sure.
And now you may go ahead, Representative. Thank you.
All right. So I, I do want to clarify that, that this is, while my residents contacted me en masse and have asked for me to advocate for a mechanism for a referendum, most towns already have this mechanism. And so I would argue that it is about fairness to make sure that every resident in the state of Connecticut has this, this mechanism. And based on the current criteria, I, I don't think it's possible to possibly abuse it because it would require a groundswell of signatures and a lot of hard work and time. You know, the threshold is extremely high, so this is not something that can easily be abused. It's, it's going to require a lot of residents in the community to participate in order to even trigger the referendum. And I want to, again, reference that the Stratford situation is that this is not just about one town. It's about making sure that every town, every resident has this, this mechanism and can work towards this goal is something that is truly exceptional occurs.
Thank you. And I agree, I would like to have everybody's town have that same opportunity, but I think they actually do. Right? If they don't like what their town is doing, their governing body, there's the ballot box. They can certainly not vote for them at that time. We have your charter revision in every town where they could certainly, you know, a charter revision that could be changed to allow for that. So I, I truly understand. I wish a lot of towns adopted this so people will have their voice. I just don't like the part of the state mandating it on the towns. And I think it really should be the choice of the people that live in that town to change their charter. If they don't like who their council members are, their board of vet, or any of those other elected people, that they could change that to get their message across. It's the state interference that, that obviously concerns me. But I, I certainly understand it. And then where, where does it end, right? So this would just be for open space for the town selling? Give me a little bit more example of what, how, what areas of the town this would affect.
Thank you. So I, I can certainly appreciate that, that sentiment. I think that in, in practical application, the concern has been that, let's use the example of what occurred. So this was not an issue that was brought up during an election cycle. It was brought up after an election cycle, and then the entire process and the sell-off happened before the next election cycle. So the residents did not have any mechanisms for recourse in the interim because there was no availability to work towards a referendum. They couldn't take them to court. They couldn't do anything. And so they were truly trapped where this sale occurred with, with no way to turn in order to force a public referendum of the matter. And by the time the next election rolls around, it's too late, right? And that is, I, I really implore you to read the article about what happened in Stratford because, yes, they did, they were able to prevail in court in this situation because there was a mechanism, but it shouldn't have to cost taxpayers money in order to, to have their voices heard, right? That, that should be something that is readily available to all residents, you know, regardless of what zip code they live in. And so I, I personally see this as a bill to make sure that we are being respectful and providing recourse when, when your government may be doing something that upsets you, but doing it in a way that is, that can't be abused. Like I said, I think that the threshold is really high right now, even in this bill. And so I, I don't think it could be abused, but I do think it's very important that, that we provide the mechanism in real time for people.
Okay, that, thank you. And again, I, I truly appreciate it, and I, you know, I'm,
You're welcome to get on with them.
I'm, I'm with you. I want the people to be involved as they can without the state getting involved. I always like to keep it in the hands of the, the town. So I appreciate your testimony today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative. Further questions from the committee? So it sounds like, I'm assuming, first of all, that you're willing to work with the committee on this bill?
Oh, yes.
Both on the provisions regarding signatures and the scope of, you know, the scope- Both on the provisions regarding signatures and the scope of, you know, the scope of things to be sold that would be covered by it?
Yes. My goal in supporting this is to give a voice to the residents who felt that they did not have recourse. And I do want to make sure that something meaningful gets passed so that, you know, so that residents do have more of a say and more influence when necessary. But I'm fully open to keeping the discussion going and finding something that is fair for everybody.
That's great. And it sounds like, from your perspective, our focus should really be on the sale of agencies, departments, authorities. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much for your testimony today and answering everybody's questions. And have a great weekend.
Thank you for your time.
Next up is Lucy Gilchrist, followed by Brian Alexander, followed by Diane Murphy.
Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, and members of the Government Administration and Elections Committee. Good afternoon. My name is Lucy Gilchrist, and I'm an MPH candidate at the Yale School of Public Health. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of HB 7207, which aims to make conservative reports on the assessment of medical necessity for mental health and other benefits of public record. Despite existing laws meant to ensure mental health parity, too many policyholders in Connecticut find it challenging to access the mental health care they already pay for. To illustrate, in 2022, the Office of Health Strategy found that four of the largest commercial insurers in Connecticut showed signs of parity noncompliance. Similarly, within Medicare Advantage plans, lower reimbursement rates for psychiatry services suggest a lack of parity with other medical services. The problem is exacerbated by current regulations, which inadvertently allow insurers to anonymously submit incomplete and disorganized information in their annual reports. This behavior burdens the state's administrative capacity and allows noncompliant carriers to evade reputational harm without penalty. There should be no excuse for noncompliance with laws that are already in place. Transparency is the key to accountability. Making the assessments public will foster trust in the insurance industry and regulatory agencies. Knowing that their reports are subject to public review, insurers may be more diligent and equitable in their evaluations, ultimately benefiting the insured population in Connecticut. Public access to these reports empowers consumers, supports researchers, and aids lawmakers in ensuring compliance with existing parity laws. Many of our neighbors, peers, colleagues, and loved ones in Connecticut receive necessary mental health care. About 1 in 5 adults in Connecticut experienced a mental health disorder in 2021, and the issue has only grown with increasing social disconnection. By passing HB 7207, Connecticut can affirm that mental health care is health care and take a step towards a more transparent and fair system. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your testimony. Are there questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you again for your testimony. Have a great weekend. Next, we will hear from Brian Alexander, who will be followed by Diane Murphy, who will be followed by Dave Hannan. Welcome, Brian. The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, Co-Chair Senator Flexer and Representative Blumenthal. He was here. Ranking Members and Members of the Government Administration Elections Committee, I'm here today to testify in favor of House Bill 7208, a legislative proposal that aims to safeguard residents from a unilateral decision-making process that has potential to result in significant consequences without their consent or participation. Ladies and gentlemen of the committee, I reside in Ansonia, a city where we have a single-party rule from the mayor down to the Board of Aldermen, a city where public hearings and public sessions at regular meetings are mere formalities. As regardless of the criticism or opposition received in relation to the proposals from City Hall, a decision has already been made by the city administration, where the mayor's dominant party adhering to the party line in voting is instructed. It's a sad reality in Ansonia, where loyalty to the mayor and his administration comes before loyalty to the residents and taxpayers they elected to serve. Ansonia recently, despite heavy opposition from residents, sold our wastewater system, a once-public utility, to Aquarion for the sum of $41 million. This sale was used for a one-time cash infusion into Ansonia, as for years, the administration has ran on steep deficits in order to keep taxes artificially low, ensuring electoral victories year after year. On April 30, 2024, the city held a public hearing in regards to the sale of the plant to Aquarion. The Valley Independent Sentinel reported the public hearing with an article titled Excuse me, sorry. With an article titled "Ansonia Residents Aren't Sold on WPCA Sale." On December 3, Ansonia sold the plant to Aquarion, completely ignoring the public's concerns in regards to the privatization of the plant leading to increased rates. Now residents of Ansonia are facing a 34% increase over the next five years with no limit on how much higher Aquarion can raise those rates after this five-year agreement. It should not come as a surprise that the sale of a public utility to a for-profit corporation will result in higher rates for residents. As EverSource prepares to finalize the sale of Aquarion to Aquarion Water Authority, the appeal of enhanced profitability and investor satisfaction will intensify at the expense of city residents, a city with an 11.4% poverty rate, higher than the state average. To require that such, to require that such consequential decisions be made by the residents who will endure the repercussions of such sales by means of referendum not only ensures legally enforceable resolution, but also ensures that municipal administrations are held accountable to the will of the public if such an administration disregards majority opposition, such is what has occurred in Ansonia. Thank you for your time this afternoon, and thank you for your service to the residents of Connecticut. I'm open to any questions, criticisms, compliments of my bald head. I shine it up nice for you guys. I try to, you know. I look out for you.
Thank you for your time and your testimony. Are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Representative Master Francesco.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian, for your testimony. Appreciate it. You mentioned, I guess specifically to your town, right? Maybe your governing body, people don't agree with maybe the recent decisions that they've done? Is that, did I understand that correctly?
The residents don't. The governing body disregards public opinion in public hearings when it comes to situations like this. This has happened on multiple occasions in Ansonia, specifically with this case. This is probably one of our bigger ones. One of the, I'd say, the second biggest issue we've had was when they rescinded the $600,000 from the school's budget because they're waiting for the alliance funding. When the schools had the alliance funding, they rescinded $600,000 from the school budget, which is against the law
Okay.
to amend a budget.
And I appreciate that. But, see, this is where that I always have the problem, and I don't like the state getting involved. Is that, that's your opinion. And I don't know the makeup of the town council, of the mayor, anybody in Ansonia, whether they're Democrat, Republican. I have no idea. And I don't even want to know.
Yeah, yep.
Excuse me, not you, Representative. I'm going to make the same reminder that Representative Blumenthal made a few minutes ago. We just have to keep one at a time talking. You're having a lovely interaction, don't get me wrong, but you have to speak one at a time so that the record, the transcription of this meeting is accurate. So Representative Master Francesco, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And to that respect, I really don't want to know if they're Democrat, Republican, unaffiliated. It actually doesn't matter to me at all. But that's your opinion, that their governing body, town council, mayor, or whatever, does not listen to its residents? I don't know. Apparently, the mayor there, the residents elected the mayor there. The residents there, I don't know what the vote was, but they elected their town council and their Board of Education. They won an election, I'm assuming fair and square. So it seems to me that the people there do agree with whatever they're doing now. They may not going forward, I don't know. But this is where I like the people in the town to make that decision and not the state. Because, you know, you get into different opinions. So your opinion was that they're not listening, but maybe other residents feel that they are. And to inflict the state into something like this, this is where I struggle with it. I hope your town could go out there and have their charter changed. Maybe they're not happy with how their town government was run. They go out and make a nice campaign effort and educate people. That's the way it really should be done. So I understand your frustration, and I do understand the people's frustration. I think a lot of us have probably been in a situation in our town where we didn't agree with what our town government did and kind of felt like there's nothing we can do. But, you know, you got your grassroots, you get out there, the ballot box is probably your most valuable tool there. But I, like I said to the representative before you, I understand their frustration. And then there's many towns that I like to see them have that opportunity to do it, but I just don't like the state interfering with it. So you can respond if you like.
Yeah, absolutely. I understand your concerns, Representative, and they are valid. Just the only thing that I would have to disagree with you on is the, I guess, like the notion of the state getting involved. I don't think that a measure to allow people to make a direct decision in their cities is the state getting involved in the decision. I think that the bill as it stands gives the public more of a voice and more of an opportunity to get involved in the government, to get involved in the decisions directly as opposed to speaking at a public forum that can, you know, one way or another, is not binding to the actual decision at hand. So in regards to the state getting involved with city decisions, I think the idea of referendum in the bill is more beneficial for the people of the city. And actually, it would be one thing if the state was telling the city they couldn't sell the property. It's another thing if the state is saying, hey, this is going to give the people more power over their government to allow equal representation, whereas a public hearing could fall on deaf ears, here's something that's more legally binding, so the residents have a voice in this matter.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that answer. So I would just say that the state, I would kind of disagree with you, the state is getting involved. Because when we make laws that mandate a town, 169 towns have the opportunity to collect signatures in a situation like this to have a referendum, we're mandating to the towns that they need to follow that because we are creating policy where the towns can actually do it by themselves through their charter. I think, I can't remember how many years it is you have to have a charter revision. I guess it depends on what the charter says. Maybe it's every 10 years, or seven or eight years, or whatever. So to empower the people to actually go out there and change their charter, to have it done. So the state is getting involved, and I understand it could be giving the people more of a say, but the state is directly getting involved because we're here today trying to write policy that would put a mandate on 169 towns. So I, listen, I totally get your frustration, and I'm halfway agree with you. I'd love to see the towns just kind of do this on their own. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no further questions or comments, thank you again for your time and your testimony, and especially for the very good laugh. Thank you.
I try. Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Diane Murphy, who will be followed by Dave Hannan, who will be followed by Jennifer Kiku Langford McDonald. Diane, welcome. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairs, ranking Members, and Members of the Government Administration and Elections Committee. My name is Diane Murphy. I am a resident of Weathersfield, and I am an education consultant at the State Department of Labor Union, representing 25,000 state municipal board of ed, active and retired public and private sector workers. And I offer the following testimony in support of Senate Bill 1499. I would like to thank the committee for not just raising this important piece of legislation, but also for being a strong champion of the state contracting standards boards over the years. Bills similar to Senate Bill 1499 have been approved by this committee in previous sessions with bipartisan votes. And given the ongoing importance of the state contracting standards board in safeguarding taxpayer dollars and state resources, I am hopeful that this bill will continue to enjoy that broad base of support. After many years of inadequate funding, financial support in state budgets, the state contracting standards board is fully funded and staffed. However, there is still room for improvement in how that board functions. Thankfully, the bill before you would enhance the effectiveness of the state's contracting watchdog. Senate Bill 1499 gives the board the tools and resources it needs to continue providing the crucial oversight for which it was created. For instance, and just to highlight a couple of critical sections of the bill, Section 1 protects the board's funding. It gives the executive director of the board the ability to recommend its funding levels and any necessary adjustments to the Secretary of OPM. Instead of being at the mercy of OPM funding recommendations, the board would be able to determine itself what it needs to do its work. And Section 2 of the bill would give the board needed oversight over contracting of quasi-public agencies. This would bring necessary transparency to those agencies while eliminating any doubt over the board's authority. Even when it is working with a limited budget and staff, the board has always done important work. In 2018, the board issued recommendations showing the potential for annual savings of up to $264 million if the state engaged in competitive bidding for POS, PSA, and procurement contracts. And more recently, after the board's approval of the Department of Transportation Plan to return the work of bridge inspections to state employees and save over $2 million in FY 2019, the board's privatization contract committee created the necessary process for reviewing privatization efforts by agencies. With the passage of Senate Bill 1499, Connecticut's contracting standards board will have the tools it needs to deliver for our state's residents. I urge every member of the committee to support Senate Bill 1499. Thank you for hearing my testimony.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your testimony. Are there questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none, thank you again for your testimony. Have a great weekend. Next, we will hear from Dave Hannan, who will be followed by Jennifer Kiku Langford McDonald, who will be followed by Jeffrey Lockwood. Is Dave here?
I am.
Online. Welcome, Dave. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, and other distinguished members of this committee. My name is Dave Hannan, and I'm here to speak in strong support of HB 7208. This bill is about one simple but fundamental issue, whether the public should have a say in decisions that directly impact them. Right now, whether residents can challenge the sale of public assets depends on which town they live in. This bill extends to the residents of every municipality the right to bring these decisions to a vote. Let's look at two Connecticut towns, Ansonia and Stratford, as proof of why this bill is necessary. In 2015, Stratford's town leaders tried to sell their water pollution control authority, but residents fought back. A bipartisan grassroots movement gathered thousands of signatures, forced a referendum, and voters overwhelmingly rejected the sale 3 to 1. That happened because Stratford's charter allowed public input in the process. Now look at Ansonia in 2024. Ansonia's WPCA was sold to Aquarion Water Company for $41 million despite public opposition. Residents demanded a referendum, but because Ansonia's charter didn't require one, 14 Aldermen made the decision instead. The result: higher sewer rates, loss of local control, and no local accountability. This is not a partisan issue. This is about fairness. Ben Proto, who led Stratford's successful referendum effort, is now the Chair of the Connecticut Republican Party, and I am the Chair of the Ansonia Democratic Town Committee. Yet we both agree that the public should have the right to vote on these critical decisions. Whether you live in a city with a referendum process or not, shouldn't decide whether you have a voice in major municipal decisions. If this bill had been law last year, Ansonia's residents could have forced a public vote. It wouldn't have guaranteed a different outcome, but it would have given people a choice. Some may question whether the state should mandate referendum procedures for municipalities that don't currently have them in their charters. The answer is yes. Local governments exist to serve the will of the people. And in cases where a city's structure does not allow for direct democratic input on major financial decisions, the state has an obligation to ensure that residents are not left without recourse. This bill does not impose a referendum requirement at every town. It simply ensures that every resident has the ability to petition for one. That is a necessary and reasonable safeguard to prevent the type of unilateral decision-making that left Ansonia residents without a voice. We cannot change what happened in Ansonia, but we can prevent it from happening again. HB 7208 restores decision-making power to the residents and ensures that they, not just politicians, determine the future of their communities. I urge you to vote yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your testimony. Are there questions or comments from members of the committee? Representative Blumenthal.
Thank you, Dave. It's very good to see you and appreciate your testimony before our committee. My co-chair and I were just noting that the Stratford situation and the Ansonia situation both involve the same authority, the Water Pollution Control Authority, and, or as I understand it, or Waste Authority anyhow. And so I was wondering if you, if you have any ideas or thoughts on why that authority or similar authorities may be particularly susceptible to these sorts of situations?
You know, I don't really know the answer to that question. What I will say is that the Stratford sale was actually to What I will say is that the Stratford sale was actually to sell it to the New Haven Water Pollution Control Authority. So it would still technically be under like public ownership, I guess, or, you know, a quasi-public ownership. But this was, the Ansonia sale is starkly different in that it was taking a public asset and selling it to a private for-profit company.
I agree. That is notable. Well, we appreciate you being here to testify, share these stories, and your support for the bill, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I see Senator Sampson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Dave, thank you for being here today. I appreciated your testimony. This is a tough issue. You know, I mean, I see both sides of it very, very clearly. You know, as Representative Masto Francesco mentioned earlier, you know, you have locally-elected town leaders. They were elected by those people that were trying to empower. They were empowered to elect people, you know, and undermining the representative systems is something that concerns me. I mean, we live in a representative republic, not a direct democracy, because we we have chosen to elect people to make decisions on behalf of the people they represent. But I do also understand the situation. So let me ask you this. I'm just looking at this bill. Is this bill before us because there is not a mechanism in current, you know, law that allows the City of Ansonia to make their own decision to put this in their charter already through you, Madam Chairman?
So there actually was some talk about a charter revision committee being formed last year. However, that kind of fizzled out when public outcry became loud. And I do want to stress that the outcry was not partisan, like this was really across the board. People did understand that this was going to result in in higher sewer rates, and they actually are quite a bit higher than what they were kind of sold on by by the administration in town, in the city. Sorry.
Through you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, so I understand that. I'm just, it just seems odd to me, and I wish I had followed this story. So that the the there was definitely talk of a charter revision, but that, you said it fizzled out.
It did.
So, I mean, but effectively what this bill is, is a charter revision being invoked by the state of Connecticut. So if there wasn't a desire for the charter revision, although there is desire for stopping the sale, I get that. I guess I'm trying to understand the logic behind the the bill that is before us. I get the elected government did something that the majority of folks disagreed with. They felt they were, you know, sold the bill of goods, et cetera. But the mechanism in that town to fix it is to create a charter revision that allows for a referendum on such a subject. Is there is there no effort to change the charter currently?
The mechanism in the town was controlled by the same administration and the same alders who voted to sell the WPCA. So true that there is a mechanism, but it was not invoked because they wanted to sell the WPCA.
Understood. I get it. So you're saying that even though there was a desire by residents to stop the transaction and then to maybe do a referendum, but the fact is that they were dealing with the same people who disagreed with them that were in elected office. I get it. So I guess let me just do this because I got to tell you, I'm trying to be very understanding and fair about this whole situation. I am a strong, strong advocate of local control. I do not like when the state steps in and starts to dictate the towns. I mean, we have bills every, you know, about how each town should have a code of ethics, for crying out loud. I mean, I won't even vote for that because I'm like, if the town doesn't want one, who am I to tell them to do so? You know, it's one of these right sizing government kind of situations for me. But in this particular case, I see the frustration, and it's the kind of thing that once it's done, it cannot be undone. You know, it's like if you elected next administration, it's not like they can go back and fix this. You could probably go forward, and I think this might be a message to the people of Ansonia that maybe you want to elect different people and change the charter to put this in next time. For me, that seems like a better mechanism than what's going to happen here. And I just, I want to explain why, and I'll ask for your reaction. You know, I look at this if the situation was reversed. Okay, suppose the people of the town wanted to do something that the the government officials who actually understood the issue better realized was a bad idea, like making a snap decision to sell off this asset of the town to reduce property taxes in the short term, knowing that in a few years that is going to go away and we will be in a worse situation. Imagine that circumstance, and I'm just kind of looking at it in the entire entirely opposite way. And for me, that's an endorsement of why we have representative government, because sometimes, you know, popular opinion is not the same thing as good judgment in the long term. And just curious if you have a reaction to that.
So first of all, to your first point about a mandate for a code of ethics, I think that's an excellent idea. I think every town should have a code of ethics, Senator Sampson. And just to the to the larger point, yeah, listen, I do understand that, and we can craft hypotheticals for all kinds of different scenarios, right? But the fact is, is that virtually every prediction about the downsides of the downsides the downsides of this sale of the WPCA have come true, right? And people, even people that were on the fence or marginally in support of selling the WPCA are now really fighting, finding that their their wallets are hurting from this. So I would say that, you know, this is, again, as Representative Rochelle pointed out, there's a relatively high bar here, right, for an actual change to occur. But, you know, I would flip it around in the in the other way, right? So let's say that the public is heard. Let's say this bill passes and the administration wants to sell some authority or some public asset that is covered by this bill, and the public manages to, you know, force a referendum on it, and it fails. Then that supports the administration's position, right? And this is just another mechanism for people to have a say. And while we are not a direct democracy, it is true that government exists to serve the people, and we must uphold that. And I think the state, as I said in my testimony, the state has an obligation as a higher authority to ensure that the public's input is heard.
Well, I appreciate that, the passion with of your argument, although I don't, frankly, I don't believe it's consistent, Dave, I'm sorry to say. I mean, you keep referring to the the right of people to be heard, but then a moment ago, you said that you think every town should be forced to have a code of ethics, and I'm on the side of suggesting that the towns should have a right to decide for themselves. So really, the discussion is not about whether the people have a right to be heard. I think you and I both agree that that's true. The question is how they have a right to be heard. And in my view, this is a mandate. I mean, you can say a lot of different things, but you're sitting before the state legislature right now, trying to get a law passed to change something back at home in town. And that, no matter which way you slice it, is a mandate. That means that the state is going to be interfering with the way that town is run. And I have a tough time. I mean, the bar for me to be to reach to suggest that that's okay, especially when the mechanism already exists, where the town to go ahead, elect different people, and pass a referendum, you know, exactly like this bill that is before us, kind of tells me that the state really should should back off. The damage is done in this particular case. Hopefully, that's an example to other communities around the state that might be facing a similar situation. And, you know, maybe they ought to look at Ansonia and say, maybe we ought to change our charter now before this happens. Again, I'm not decided on the bill. I'm honestly not, because I'm sympathetic to the notion of the circumstances that happen there. I'm just not 100% ready to say the state should be the ones to dictate how this town or any community across Connecticut should determine this when there is a mechanism already in place. I really appreciate your time and indulging me in a little back and forth on it. I think we agree a lot more than we don't. I just think the way to get there might be a little different. Thank you.
So I would like to just make a follow-up point that I don't believe that rights should be determined by which zip code you live in or which town you live in. I think it's very important that important, like extremely important decisions about selling public assets that are going to increase taxes and fees on all city residents should absolutely not be decided by 15 people on a board of on the Board of Alders. That 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 decision should be made by the public. So.
I appreciate that, Dave, except, I mean, the fact that matters that you're suggesting that, you know, the different towns shouldn't have the right to elect their own representation and make their own decisions about how much they fund a Board of Ed, or whether the state of Connecticut should have different laws than the state of Massachusetts or the state of Texas. I mean, we live in a representative system. I mean, and are you suggesting that we just disband the entire representative, like, excuse me, representative system in favor of just direct democracy, where the majority mob rule makes decisions about everything? That's what it sounds like.
I think you know that that's not what I'm suggesting.
Well, I, again, I mean, I haven't heard anything contrary, and I'm not trying to be combative. I just, everything that you've said is always about these people have a right in the town, and I agree. They have a right to elect whoever they choose.
The assets of the city are the public's, not the city.
Excuse me, excuse me. I'm sorry to interrupt. We cannot speak over each other. Senator Sampson was speaking, and Mr. Hannan, I know you want to respond.
I'm sorry.
Hear your response, but we have to let Senator Sampson finish.
I understand. I'm sorry.
Of course. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. I was done with my comment. Dave, go ahead.
I'm done, too.
Great. For everybody.
All right. Well, we'll we'll take it offline maybe, and we'll try and iron it out. Thank you very much, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you again for your time and your testimony. I hope you have a great weekend.
Thank you. You, too.
Next, we will hear from Jennifer Kiku Langford McDonald, followed by Jeffrey Lockwood, followed by Bobby Shipman. Welcome, Jennifer. The floor is yours. Jennifer was here. Can we update Jennifer to a panelist, please? Jennifer, you need to accept the invite to become a panelist. Jennifer, the floor is yours. Jennifer, you're going to miss your opportunity if you cannot unmute yourself.
I didn't, I wasn't seeing the pop-up. Um, thank you.
If possible, can you turn your camera on?
Um, I'm not seeing that option either. I'm not sure.
Right-click on it. If you, yeah, the top right-hand corner of your screen?
Hmm.
Of your image of yourself?
Okay, sorry, just a moment.
That's okay.
Um, I think my computer is not cooperating today.
Okay. Please, please proceed. Thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Flexer, Chairman Blumenthal, and members of the Government Administration and Elections Committee. My name is Jennifer Kiku Langford McDonald, and I live in Killingley, Connecticut. And I thank you for the opportunity to offer testimony in support of Senate Joint Resolution 16 condemning condemning the provisions of the Treaty of Hartford of 1638. When moving to Connecticut in 2010, I did not know about the Pequot War, but after being involved in the contentious Native mascot issue in Killingley in 2019, I realized that people on both sides of the issue, myself included, owe it to the Indigenous people of Connecticut to learn their histories accurately and to understand how the colonization of this country continues to negatively impact their lives on many levels today. I now work at Brown University in the Bruce J. Simmons Center for the Study of Slavery and Justice. I mention that only for informational purposes. My testimony and views stated here are my own and not that of Brown University. But through my work and interactions with dozens of scholars who are experts on the global history and legacies of the racial slave trade, I've learned a lot in the last four years that either I was never taught or which was erased from the history curriculum that I was exposed to in public high school in Arizona, college at Dartmouth in New Hampshire, and graduate school at Yale Divinity School. I was surprised to learn just a few years ago that the racial slavery in what is now called the United States included enslavement of Indigenous people alongside that of captured and enslaved Africans, and that this practice was a significant outcome in Connecticut during and after the Pequot War. Students in Connecticut and across the US should learn this history and know that the Pequots, know what the Pequots lost when Connecticut lands came to be under control of the colonists. They also should know that the current Connecticut government is not proud of this history. Adopting SJ16 would make that clear and create a teachable moment for the people in Connecticut. As a descendant of early English colonists born in Connecticut in the 1630s, I feel a moral obligation to speak out against the wrongdoings of my ancestors. My family directly benefited from the war and genocide against the Pequots, the seizure of their ancestral homelands, and their enslavement. I inherit this legacy, and while there's nothing I can do to change the past, I am able to work toward a more just society in my lifetime. And the state of Connecticut has the same moral obligation to acknowledge the stain on our history and to work toward a situation with Indigenous people still living in our state so they can thrive and continue in their cultures, languages, and histories into the future. I urge all members to support and work for the adoption of SJ16, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your testimony today. Are there questions or comments from members of the committee? Seeing none, I just want to thank you again for your your testimony and in particular what you shared about your own family heritage and its roots going back to Connecticut in the 1600s. I think that's an interesting perspective that you've brought to this conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, again, thank you again for your testimony. Have a great weekend. Next, we will hear from Jeffrey Lockwood, who will be followed by Bobby Shipman, who will be followed by Jamie Foster. Welcome, Jeffrey. I don't see Jeffrey. Going once, Jeffrey Lockwood. Going twice. Okay, we're going to move on. Bobby Shipman. Is Bobby Shipman here? Welcome, Bobby. Bobby, can I, oh, there we go. Keep going. Sorry for the interruption.
I thank the committee for the opportunity to speak in favor of Senate Bill 1168, which would prohibit the collection of automatically recurring political contributions on online fundraising platforms, typically using a pre-checked box on the web page without the affirmative consent of contributors. I'm Bobby Shipman, a senior at Sinsbury High School and a resident of Bloomfield. Over the course of the past few months, I have had the great privilege of being able to work with Senator Honig and Representative Osborne to address this issue. I care about it because an honest government cannot be achieved without elections which mirror those conditions, which begins with prohibiting the use of pre-checked boxes in the solicitation of recurring donations. To reiterate the issue, when a person attempts to make a donation to a political or candidate committee online, almost always, there's a pre-checked box which signs the contributor up to make the donation on a monthly or weekly basis, even if they are under the impression that they are only making the donation once, which they almost always are. These pre-checked boxes are a form of passive consent used to circumvent existing laws that prohibit the making of political contributions without the permission of the contributor. However, they do not require any affirmative consent on the part of the contributor at all. These boxes have been commonly used for about five years now, and according to investigations by CNN and the New York Times, donors have ended up incurring massive amounts of debt, in some cases even putting off medical treatment and experiencing foreclosure because of political contributions they didn't even know they made. Thus, it should come as no surprise that in 2021, the Federal Election Commission voted to prohibit this practice. But what is surprising is that a federal agency, which is mandated to have three Democratic members and three Republican members, where votes are frequently shattered on the rocks of gridlock, and where agreements between sides are few and far between, voted unanimously 6 to 0 to prohibit the use of pre-checked boxes. In fact, the cause In fact, the cause picked up notable supporters on both sides of the aisle, such as Democratic Senator Amy Klobuchar of Minnesota and Jack Cittirelli, the 2021 Republican nominee for Governor of New Jersey. Despite this bipartisan backing and attempts to codify a prohibition on pre-checked boxes into law in multiple states across the country, they have not been successfully outlawed anywhere yet. If this bill passes, Connecticut, to my knowledge, would become the first state to ban pre-checked boxes in political fundraising. But I would say that in the Constitution state, the first place in this hemisphere, as Thomas Hooker put it in 1638, founded on the free consent of the people, you should celebrate being trailblazers in democracy. Thus, I strongly urge the committee to support this measure. Thank you for your time, and I would love to hear your questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your testimony. Representative Osborne.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you so much, Bobby, for being here today. I've really enjoyed working with you this year. You've got some great ideas and a real passion for democracy and for politics, and it's been a real pleasure to get to know you. You have some other ideas about pre-checked boxes. Can you share some of those with us?
Um. Yeah, so part of the issue with the boxes is specifically the language that's used around them. Part of it would all, I would hope that there would be more transparency, because a lot of time it doesn't say where the box is, the little check mark, it doesn't say you are making donation weekly. It says you are joining the president's inner circle, or you are becoming an elite patriot or something like that. When you uncheck it, it says something like, are you aware that you're abandoning, you know, the senator or something like that? And this clearly preys on elderly people who don't understand what's going on. Some, you know, they literally think they are like a direct line advisor to the person they're donating to because of this language. So ideally, making sure it says clearly, this is for a recurring contribution and nothing else.
I appreciate your thoughts on that, Bobby. Also, I know you had some thoughts about other automatic things that happen. In particular, you and I discussed a bill concept that would have provided additional registration or, in some instances, kept people from automatically registering for certain things. Do you want to share some of those ideas with us?
Sure. So this is a little bit different, but as you know, in our state, when you go to get your driver's license and renew it, you are signed up to vote again in what's called automatic voter registration. And this only happens when you renew your license. And as you would imagine, there are a lot of people who don't have cars, and they don't have the chance to get this easy automatic renewal, and so they have to, you know, go through the rather difficult process of registering to vote themselves. So the proposal that I shared with Representative Osborne on that topic was expanding our automatic voter registration system to public assistance offices. Of the 24 states plus Washington DC, which have automatic voter registration, 16 plus DC have it at someplace other than the DMV. So Connecticut would be joining the majority of those states.
Bobby, thank you so much for coming and sharing the ideas you share with me with the rest of the committee. I'm excited to see somebody as young as you, as knowledgeable and as involved and as dedicated to this. So it's been a pleasure getting to know you, and thank you again for your mentorship.
Thank you, Representative, and I just want to thank you for your testimony. I actually do have a couple of, maybe one question for you. But just to comment briefly on the exchange you just had with Representative Osborne, we are working diligently to try to get that automatic registration to be throughout all state agencies. So appreciate your advocacy on that. And on the underlying bill, I think you may be the only person that's coming today to talk about this bill, and I'm very grateful to you for, because I saw reports last year of, as you described, platforms of both partisan persuasions taking advantage of people and using these deceptive practices, and and that's why this bill is before us today, and very grateful to you for your advocacy in favor of it. Now, you started, in your testimony, you talked about a decision before the Federal Elections Commission, but ultimately, they took no action because their three to three makeup caused a stalemate. Is that accurate?
Well, so they actually agreed on this six, nothing. Usually, it's three, three, which means nothing to be done, but the, for things like this, the Federal Election Commission can't, you know, they can't say no one can use this fundraising method anymore. They can only make a recommendation that Congress and the state legislatures act on it. They can really only enforce the laws on the books and at the federal level, and there's nothing that could be construed to prohibit this.
And do you happen to know if there's any congressional action that's pending to try to limit these practices at the federal level?
Right after that decision back in 2021, the Recur Act was introduced by Senator Klobuchar and co-sponsored by a few others, but it didn't get very far. And I think it may have been introduced one more time, but it kind of just fell by the wayside. There are, we are, I think, the third state to consider a bill on this topic after Pennsylvania and New Jersey, sponsored by people of both political persuasions in both of those states, but neither of them have seen it through to completion either.
Okay, and in the time since 2021, when this was first identified as a problem in need of a solution, we've seen increasing reports of of people, and as you described accurately, particularly the elderly being deceived by these practices and therefore contributing tens of thousands, in some cases, millions of dollars, their entire safety net to both, to all partisan persuasions, not just Democrats, not just Republicans, but both parties using various platforms, taking advantage of that. And you've read those those same accounts?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for your your time and your your advocacy today and your testimony.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. You too. Have a nice weekend. Next, we will hear from Representative Jamie Foster, who will be followed by Travis Woodward, who will be followed by Dr. Immacula Khan. Welcome, Representative Foster. The floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I'm really grateful to be before GAE, and actually, in my four years, this is my first time testifying before this committee. So it's nice to join you all, and it's wonderful to be here. And I want to thank the committee membership and leadership for raising House Bill 7206. I, there are a lot, a variety of components in this bill that are relevant to my constituency that I serve. And if I had come before this committee not having experienced the beginning of this week that I did, I, my testimony would have looked very different. So I had planned to come to talk about the importance of regulatory oversight and guaranteed intervenor status for constituencies before the Connecticut Sitting Council. The town of East Windsor, which some members of the Sitting Council mentioned that it is the most solar dense town in the state of Connecticut, has had many different iterations before the Sitting Council, and I think that we need to ensure in the proceedings that we give parties intervenor status who are due their voice before the Connecticut Sitting Council. I have one array in my community in particular that the builder who was developing property was noticed of a setting provision, and then houses were built, and the homeowners were not notified that a solar array was coming their way. The front door of the solar array is 127 feet, the inverters from the front door of someone's house. And on Tuesday, while I was sitting in Veterans and Military Affairs, I was notified that it was on fire. And so right now, my community is engaging in some pretty complicated navigation about what's going to happen and who will make the determination about if and when this can be turned back on. And if adequate safety procedures have been taken place to address what's going forward. So in addition to strongly supporting the strengthening of the proceedings before the Setting Council, transparency for utility expenditures, which I strongly support in the bill, I think that this committee should consider making the utility companies and generators. So it's it's complicated in the way we regulate energy in our space. Anytime you consider regulating one body, you have to consider the transmission organizations, the the utility companies, and the generators, because we often forget them in the way we regulate. And we have to consider very carefully what, how they can communicate with their captive audiences. And I believe that all communications by all three of these organizations should be subject to FOIA. And so those were my intentions to testify originally, but now I believe that the Sitting Council should be given the authority to make determinations about re-energization, re-energization, re-energization after a critical event. I don't think it should just be the Signing Council. I don't think they have the expertise alone. I think PURA needs to be involved in that decision-making process, and I think the town needs a final say, the Fire Marshal and the Building Inspector, but I think that this committee is the right place to make considerations about who has oversight in these critical events. And I think that this bill is an opportunity to address what is becoming a very big issue in my community. Thank you, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your testimony. Are there questions or comments from members of the committee? Representative Blumenthal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see you, Representative Foster.
Good to see you too.
For your testimony today. That sounds like a pretty shocking event, and I'm sure it's very concerning for members of your town. And is there any provision right now before re-energization? That any sort of fire inspection, building inspection, safety inspection has to take place?
Right now, we're operating under the assumption that the Fire Marshal and Building Inspector will need to sign off on this process. But this actually has never happened in Connecticut before, so we're going to be foraging the path. And so the path that we're attempting to forage, I I hope will be codified in law. You know, I've talked to colleagues, Representative Anderson has a big storage array that's being cited in his district, and we've compared notes many times on this process, and local communities don't have a lot of say before the Sitting Council, and that was by design, but it has come, it's resulted in some pretty significant consequences. This array that's owned by NEXTIRA has been a pretty persistent nuisance, and the decibel limit that it reaches is right at the threshold. And so it's unusual for a solar array to be very noisy. That is the exception, not the norm. And we have always alleged that we think it's the sign of a problem. And there hasn't really been the ability to leverage either the Sitting Council or another entity to take action on these complaints. So last year, members of this committee in collaboration with Judiciary and Energy and Technology have worked to pass House Bill 5507, but the way that those, that legislation was enacted, it doesn't allow retroactive control over these, these arrays that were cited under one condition and things changed moving forward. You can't hold them accountable to new legislation when they were cited and approved under different circumstances. But we have a unique opportunity before us right now. It is currently de-energized, and we have before us the opportunity to make sure that this never happens again. And what frightens me about the way this happened in the current proceeding is that on Friday, emergency services were called out to arcing on the wire, and it's pretty horrifying. It's like a ball of of blue light glowing on a pole. There was an explosion hours later, and the system was re-energized. And so I, I want to make sure that there's really rigorous accountability for safety, but also citing, because 127 feet away from someone's front door is too close for inverters. And I think we need to make sure that although this project was cited under specific circumstances, there was this concurrent building that was happening, and the poor, the homeowners who live here were really given a really unfortunate sort of, you know, candid unfortunate deck of cards, because they they didn't have the ability to be an intervenor before the Sitting Council. And now, any future improvements or repairs that are necessary, I believe, should have to go through the Sitting Council for consideration. And then we need to make sure that we have appropriately, appropriate regulatory oversight. I'm working on drafting an amendment for a bill to ensure this accountability for critical safety incidences. We have that in the natural gas space, but we don't for generators in the in the renewable space. So we're working really hard on trying to figure out why, where there are gaps in our legislation that create accountability for these generators, and the Sitting Council really has a lot more oversight over generators. PURA has oversight over the EDCs, and the TOs have oversight, like, that's more Burke-heavy than it is state level. And so we have these gaps in state oversight, and I'm hoping that this bill is one opportunity to fill some holes and to make sure that my constituency can be protected by state agency.
Well, thank you for that answer and for sharing this experience with us. You know, I certainly think it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to cite something this large and potentially dangerous and then leave it alone forever. There should be some state oversight going forward and and something to ensure that safety, safety procedures are being followed, and, you know, that one hand knows what the other hand is doing, and people are properly informed and heard. I wanted to ask you about some of the less, shall we say, emergent aspects of the issue. You know, several provisions of this bill are aimed at, I guess I could say roughly increasing the ability of the Office of the Consumer Council to participate and advocate for consumers in Sitting Council proceedings, and and I guess better informing the Sitting Council. There's a provision to retain an independent engineer. Do you support those provisions, first of all, and how and why do you think they would be helpful to the Sitting Council and to the ratepayers of Connecticut?
Yeah, it's very interesting. There was a Superior Court decision today that has this footnote that you all should check out later that kind of answers the problem, but for a really long time in this building, the utility companies have benefited from what I believe is an intentional bamboozling, where they can say science and legal jargon, and it goes largely unchecked because we are a citizens legislature, and we don't all have the content area expertise that their army of lobbyists, attorneys, and engineering experts have. And so the best hope we have in these proceedings of representing ourselves better is for OCC and the Sitting Council and PURA to have every tool ready at their disposal to push back. I have joked that the lobbying heard for the utility companies and the generators, when they go before there, like, we will never be able to put the amount of brains and the amount of legal skills and expertise on this work as possible, and that has, for a very long time, been their game. It's subterfuge and obfuscation, like, look over here, legal terms, important science terms, don't pay attention. And when I was on the Energy and Technology Committee, I sat before a presentation, and there was a slide that was presented, and it actually had an axis that wasn't a continuous series of numbers. Like, it literally was, there was a gap, there was no demarcation that the numbers had changed, and the slide deck showed that there was like a very modest increase in in time over the cost, which we all know isn't true. But when you're looking at the data, and it's never, something you've never seen before, you never had the opportunity to review, it was misrepresented, and I don't believe by accident, but I don't know that. They have, they spent more on their generation of preparation in their testimony than we all make in a single term, in in a year in the legislature. I bet each time they come and testify before us on the committee, there's more time is going into their preparation. So their proceedings between PURA and the Sitting Council, I mean, our salaries are a very mere fraction of what they spend in each one of those proceedings. So how can our lay constituency who have their full-time jobs, families to feed, and these really back-breaking bills, how are they ever supposed to come to terms and testify and better represent themselves? The only opportunity we have to give them a chance at a David and Goliath comeback is that we give OCC the ability to to support it, and we give them engineering expertise. We give them legal expertise. They have a lot of wonderful legal expertise available to them, but we also give PURA and the Sitting Council the ability to consult experts, because the thing is, the utility companies have a huge amount of in-house expertise, but they are consulting whoever they need to make the best case available in everything that they're going for, and the only thing that they have loyalty to are their shareholders. We need people whose fidelity is to the ratepayers and the consumers of Connecticut to be the voice that's leveraged and given expertise. And I think the provisions in this bill make a start at that. I think expanded FOIA provisions do that, too.
Those are some very good points. You know, I've often been struck by, at least as I've been able to to find it on the Sitting Council and even on PURA, like, there's just a very vast differential in resources being directed at those proceedings, which are supposed to be adversary proceedings, and it just seems like the deck is totally stacked on one side in terms of the resources, expertise, and and person power. And it's not on the side of the ratepayers. So, you know, I certainly think and agree with you that I think increasing the resources and the opportunity to intervene of the OCC and increasing the access to independent engineers who haven't been hired to support a project would be in the interest of the ratepayers.
There could probably be some revolving door provisions there, though, because what I'll say is challenging in this space is that, I apologize. But what is challenging in this space is that the utility companies just pay by economies of scale so much more, and so you're hard pressed to find people who can last a long time in the industry and not be tempted into, you know, a and not be tempted into, you know, a more, you know, greener grasses economically. And so I think there should be revolving door provisions, too, for their external consultations.
That's a, that's a good point, and one we should consider. Additionally, you know, one of the, I think, the, the counterarguments we hear against giving OCC or Siting Council or PURA additional resources and engineers is, you know, this is going to cost the ratepayers more money, because it's going to ultimately be reimbursable by the utilities or through public utilities charge. And so what do you think of that counterargument? And what is your response?
The ratepayers are paying for their experts in-house, so you might as well stack the deck in your way. The Connecticut ratepayers, we changed in SB 7 last year. We made it so when you have a proceeding before the utility company, and they're challenging the interests of the Connecticut ratepayers, we are finally no longer paying for their expertise in those public hearings. But up until last year, we were paying for all of their work that was infidelity to their shareholders, not their ratepayers. And so the, we, we have to tip the scale. And I, I think of it, oftentimes, there are conversations in this utility space about getting advocates to sort of weigh in in a way that's more important. I think this is one of the reasons why we need to make sure that membership of PURA and the Siting Council represents ratepayer advocacy, but also has technical expertise, because it's this impossible scale. And I don't, like, I haven't used the word bamboozle ever so much in my whole life. But that's what this game is, is that they go before this lay committee, and we have folks who have to do the very best with the skills that they have to push back against this Goliath, who's saying, you, we, we have all this money, we have all these resources. We know better than you. You don't understand how energy policy and regulation works. You don't understand how engineering works. You don't understand how, you know, generation works. And, you know, I, I had this call this morning with one of the generators around the fire. And there's this, like, back and forth here, like, who is responsible for the fire? And is it the utility or is it the generator? And the problem is, I have a PhD in nutrition. I don't know. I'd like to know. I want to make sure that my neighbors are safe. My kid's daycare was a half a mile up the street from this fire. Like, I want to make sure that we handle this appropriately, but I don't know. And someone on behalf of us should know. And the only way to do that is to make sure we can hire them and not be outgunned in the, in the fight, because we need to make sure that they have the experts that they need, which means paying, sometimes you get what you pay for expertise-wise.
Yeah, I, I will agree with you. You know, my undergraduate degree was in history and literature, so I'm certainly not equipped to understand all the science here. But I really don't understand why, then, we should be prevented from hiring people who do, who can give us an independent opinion on these matters. And not only on the safety matters, but especially on these massive projects that can cost hundreds of millions or billions of dollars, seize land through eminent domain, all of it reimbursed by the ratepayers for a guaranteed profit of almost 10%. I just see powerful, powerful incentives to build, to build expensively, to build in a way that's not sustainable. And I don't see anywhere near sufficient expertise or resources to challenge any assumptions or data that have been provided. And, you know, I think, you know, if we, if, if one project, one of these projects is either denied or changed as a result of increased expertise on the Siting Council or the Office of the Consumer Council, then that would pay the salaries or costs of these individuals hundreds of times over. And so I, I just, I see this as a very worthwhile investment. I, I wonder if you could comment on the, the cost issue and the cost-effectiveness issue, because that's something that really concerns me, especially we're having this constant debate about energy prices. And my understanding, you can correct me if I'm wrong, distribution and a little bit of transmission, this is where the utilities make their money.
Correct. And so one of the things that we're struggling with right now is there is a inherently perverse incentive that is guaranteed by a Supreme Court decision, which is one of the ways they try and bamboozle you. That is, they have guaranteed return on all of their investments and, or, or the guaranteed opportunity to get return on their investment before. And unless you give these agencies the opportunity to push back, they get this 10% return. And what is interesting is, if you talk to any of the utilities, they'd be like, well, why would we build extra 10% return? It is a perverse incentive that they are guaranteed. And what is really interesting is, we don't, I mean, this is something I think the Energy and Technology Committee hopes to work on significantly this year. There's a bill on grid-enhancing technologies and advanced transmission technologies that's, I hope, comes out of committee next week. But these, this, these actions are regulated in such a complex, like, inter-agency mix. There's FERC, and then there's regulation between Siting Council and PURA. And there's oversight and advocacy by OCC. But the utility companies have long benefited from being able to say, oh, no, this group doesn't have regulatory ability, and this group doesn't have regulatory ability, and FERC already told us we can do this, and not having the opportunity to really get pushed back. So I think any dollar spent pushing back against their investments in transmission, when they are perhaps gold-plated, when they are perhaps excessive and unnecessary, any dollar you spend pushing back against those investments is a dollar spent benefiting Connecticut ratepayers. And this is the thing that's challenging about things that are of ratepayer impact. And the way that we look at ratepayer impact in the General Assembly, there are hundreds of thousands of examples where a dollar spent is hundreds of dollars saved, thousands of dollars saved, millions of dollars saved. And sometimes it's the best path forward, but it is challenging to demonstrate proof of the economic benefit when you're looking in short windows of time. But the thing is, when you dig a little deep into utility investments into transmission, we do not have a grid reliability problem in the Northeast. That is not true in other states. But if we want a reliable grid, we need to make sure that the investments in the grid are appropriate from an engineering standpoint. But having an engineer with structural estimating experience answering to questions on the Siting Council, answering questions in PURA, that will help knee-jerk reaction whether an investment in a, in, in a transmission cost makes sense. The cost to dig up a road and lay wires down is the same in transportation. It's the same in water investment. It's the same in an electrical investment. And someone who has experience in cost estimating can push back against these numbers. In the absence of that expertise there, there's no pushback. And the same is said for, is this technology the best choice? Right now, the burden of proof is on the utility company, and the Siting Council accepts or rejects their expertise when they make investments into transmission. And the utility company does the cost estimating. And Siting Council isn't checking those numbers. They don't have that expertise on site. And so when they say the transmission cost is best met by doing these wires and poles, there's not a grid-enhancing technology that's better suited. There's not an opportunity to make improvements on the wires and poles instead of rebuilding new ones. No one's pushing back, and they have the opportunity to say, we need to replace this spot here. And guess what? They make money. So of course, they're going to do it. And assuming that we can just leave capitalism to be good actors and regulate themselves, I think is risky. Our ratepayers are really suffering. And I think that sometimes regulation in this, you know, amping up expertise, amping up advocacy for constituents is exactly what our constituents want from us. I think when they sort of peel back the onion a little bit, they want accountability. They want someone to push back against the utility companies.
Thank you. And I was wondering if you could comment on the grid-enhancing technologies part of the bill? Do you have any perspective on that?
Yeah, so we have this bill in Energy and Technology this year, where we are looking at alternatives to traditional transmission projects. Well, these aren't really being considered unless the utility company makes a choice to make that investment. What is really challenging about the way that they get cited and approved right now is if they may, if they choose a technology and they deploy it, but they don't turn on any of its capacity, they still get reimbursement for the technology that they paid for, even if it's not deployed to its full benefit. We do not have an accountability mechanism to say, you put in smart meters. Smart meters are supposed to be a return on investment of X percentage. And the way you deployed them, they're built, they're in the systems, but they're not using all their technology that's available to them. You don't have the appropriate savings. We have no way to hold them accountable to appropriately deploying that technology. And the ratepayers paid for that technology, whether it's a brick in the way it's utilized or whether it's deployed to its full capacity. And so we need to make sure that there's accountability. And if there's technology that makes the cost of doing business cheaper, we would be stupid not to adopt it.
Well, I really appreciate all the, the expertise that you've helped deliver to the committee today. You know, obviously, we have a limited aperture into this issue. We're focused on the structures and processes that are providing this oversight of our capital projects by utilities, of the reimbursement of them by the ratepayers. And certainly, from, from my perspective, and I think, you know, the, the cognizance of the committee perspective, you know, the deck seems to be stacked overwhelmingly against the ratepayers currently. And if we can even that a bit, you know, I, I'm not going to comment on specific energy policy, but at least we'll have a process where the ratepayers are being properly represented, where there's expertise, where this oversight mechanism can actually do its job in a way that we, on the outside, can say, this looks reliable. So, you know, I think that's our window into this. I'm very interested in pursuing it. And, you know, I think Connecticut consumers need to have a better process that they can rely on.
And you have oversight over auditing provisions. So I also encourage you to extend those to the fullest extent of your possibility, because there's a lot of programs that this public utilities are administering that are being internally audited. They hire, I, they bragged to me about the Home Energy Efficiency Program last week. They spend $3.5 million in evaluation, and none of the evaluation includes demonstration of how they came to their numbers. There's like a bunch of case studies in it, and then there's this cost-saving amount. Like, those programs work, they're effective, but do we know that they're working? Do we know that every dollar spent is resulting in the return on investment it's supposed to? So I think you should have the Auditors of Public Accounts, who I'm a huge fan of. I think we should allow them to audit all of those programs and provisions.
Well, I think you may have to come back to one of our future public hearings this session, because
This might be my new favorite committee.
Predicting the future of, of, of some bills in the, in this committee. But I would just say, thank you for being here. Thank you for contributing your expertise to our processes. You know, energy bills in Connecticut are way too high. They're unsustainable, and the processes that exist for vetting what goes into them just simply aren't up to the task. And we need to unstack the deck and make sure that there's proper oversight, accountability, and transparency. And we look forward to working with you and Energy and Technology Committee on making that reality.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Further question? Oh, I guess I'm not chairing, sorry.
Thank you, Representative. And thank you, Representative, for your testimony. I do just want to ask just two quick follow-up questions, and maybe, maybe with the statement. I appreciate what you've said here today, I really greatly do. And I, the one thing I, I guess I would add to what you've said is that I was particularly interested in what you said about the regulatory scheme and all the overlapping entities, whether it's federal, whether it's state, such a wide variety of agencies. And yet, what they're, what they have oversight over are monopolies, right? Connecticut consumers don't have any choice. And so that's why beefing up whatever regulatory we have through state agencies is so important. And that's why the work you described from SB 7 from last year, and finally having some accountability in their spending and making sure our ratepayers aren't paying for their in-house so-called government relations people, AKA their lobbyists. And this bill before us extends that provision, correct? Can you talk about that a little bit? There was perhaps one thing we left off the table last year in allowing them to use some of their lobbying resources before the Siting Council? And we're going to limit that as well?
Yeah, so it's interesting. I would have never known before as a state representative that when the utility companies pay someone to ensure their profits and revenue are protected, and then they come before us to protect their financial interests, that we were paying for them? Like, that was honestly the most upsetting thing I've ever learned since I've been in this building. But as it turns out, they hire expertise and lobbyists as they go before PURA, that happens, and as they go before the Siting Council. And, and any time that they are working against the best interest of the ratepayers, which their fidelity is to their shareholders, like, we should not be paying for that. So I, I, I support any expansion of preventing rate recovery of their actions, especially when they're not working in the best interest of the ratepayers.
Is there any area where we are still missing that opportunity?
You know, honestly, it takes a problem to be able to sometimes identify the solution. So this is what, like, I didn't realize that in an incident related to a renewable generator, we don't have oversight capacity of when it gets turned back on, on the state level. Like, I want state experts to come to East Windsor and look at the generation materials and the distribution system. And I want them to look at it and confirm, as an unbiased party, that what the utility companies and the generators are saying to us is true. I didn't know that that wasn't clearly laid out in our law until this problem arose. And I think that that's the problem we're running up against here, is you don't know there's something that needs to be regulated until there's a bad action. And then you have to, I mean, that's so much of the legislation that we do across this committee, Energy and Technology, the Children's Committee, most of their work happens on the heels of something tragic. And so that's, unfortunately, I'm sure there's a lot more to do.
Well, I'd argue that's a problem with the function of this part-time legislature, but that's a, a debate for this committee to have on another day. But is in the purview of this committee. So thank you again for your time and your testimony.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Dr. Immacula Khan, who will be followed by Christian Damiana, followed by Loretta J. Dr. Khan? I don't see Dr. Khan. How about Christian? Welcome, Christian. The floor is yours, and Representative Blumenthal, the meeting is yours.
Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal, members of the committee. My name is Christian Damiana, and I'm the Public Policy Manager at Mental Health Connecticut, a direct care and advocacy organization. I lead the Connecticut Parity Coalition, which is a group of more than 25 organizations advocating for behavioral health equity in our state. Members include everybody from the Connecticut Psychiatric Society and Psychiatric Association, psychological, to the Connecticut Nonprofit Alliance and NAMI. So a broad coalition. And we're here today to urge you to pass HB 7207, which would bring critical transparency to insurer reporting on parity. We're grateful that you raised this important bill, and we're especially grateful to Representative Blumenthal for his creativity in developing this specific solution. The support for this bill is overwhelming. One-third of state legislators, the comptroller, and the Attorney General have backed nearly identical language in companion legislation. The Connecticut Freedom of Information Commission and the Council on FOI both support it as well. Transparency in regulatory filings is a fundamental principle of government accountability, and this bill ensures that insurers are held to the same standard as every other regulated industry in Connecticut. But earlier, Representative Blumenthal asked if anyone was in opposition to this bill. And one group does oppose this concept, the Connecticut Association of Health Plans. Their argument, that revealing information about insurers' parity compliance could create risks for insurance companies due to the recent violent death of an industry executive. Let's be clear about what's happening here. The industry is trying to exploit a tragic event to avoid transparency. They're suggesting that insurers, some of the largest and most powerful corporations in the country, need confidentiality, not because the reports contain sensitive information, but because transparency threatens their ability to avoid accountability. The reality is this, the law already requires these reports. The only difference is, under the current statute, insurers can leave entire sections blank, fail to disclose key factors in their decision-making, or provide no analysis of how they apply treatment limits to mental health benefits versus medical benefits, and they can do so anonymously. The insurers then went on to say that parity laws are frequently misinterpreted. And yet, their solution is not to provide clearer, more complete reports. It's to keep their reports hidden altogether. The truth is simple. Insurers want secrecy because they don't want scrutiny. If they are truly in full compliance, they should welcome transparency, not fight against it. Without transparency, there is no accountability. And without accountability, mental health parity is just a premise on paper. I urge the committee to pass HB 7207. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the committee? So that argument that you listed, related to the murder of the, you know, healthcare CEO, where was that argument made?
They submitted that in their testimony to the Insurance Committee on SB 10, which contains nearly identical language about revealing the identities of these insurers on their reports.
Okay, and these reports, would they reveal any specific individuals' names or anything like that? Or would just reveal the name of the insurer?
Yeah, certainly not the names of an individual, just the name of the insurer.
Well, they haven't submitted any testimony in this committee on this bill, which I would like them to, because I'd like to know, I'm assuming they I'm assuming they oppose it if they oppose in the other committee, but I'd like to know why they oppose this provision in particular here. And it would have been great to have them answer questions. But, you know, I don't think that that's a very appropriate argument or analogy when the question is, is a company complying with state law? I mean, we, we certainly and the people of Connecticut deserve to know whether our mental health parity laws are being followed and to what extent and how we can improve them. So have you or your organization observed, first of all, I'll backtrack a little bit. Do you have, do you and your organization have any perspective or data on whether and to what extent they are actually being followed currently?
Yes, and so I went into great detail on this in my written testimony before the Insurance Committee, which I did link in my written testimony I submitted here today. We've substantiated potential widespread parity violations. There was an Office of Health Strategy report that used federal warning signs analysis. And they found that four of seven insurers in Connecticut, that's Anthem, United Healthcare, Connecticut Care and Cigna, are meeting federal warning signs or parity noncompliance. And so what that means is they are systematically underpaying behavioral health providers compared to medical providers likely in violation of the law. And what OHS said was, this needs to be looked at further. You know, we need to investigate why this might be happening. Unfortunately, that seems to have fallen on deaf ears as the Insurance Department has apparently not investigated it and apparently has instead told the Insurance Committee that they're not seeing any violations of parity. And when they say that, it's because in these reports that we're talking about today, they're not seeing any textual reports of parity violations submitted by the insurance companies themselves. So it's hardly a surprise, the reports don't say that. But they're not looking at external sources that have substantiated again and again that insurers are not complying with the law.
And if you could just inform us, what are the effects on the marketplace for mental and behavioral health access when parity is not observed?
I think first and foremost is fewer providers participating in insurance networks. And what that leads to is fewer of your constituents who are covered by commercial insurance being able to find behavioral health providers in their community that are accepting new patients. And so what we've seen is there are far fewer behavioral health providers in Connecticut than the need. And that's caused by many things, not just parity compliance. We're happy to address all of them. But it's leading to people directly being unable to access the care that they need and that often they're entitled to by the law.
Well, I would certainly echo that based on, you know, data I've read in the public press. You know, it seems that most therapists, as far as I've read, don't take insurance for this reason. And that means, I guess, that most people would have to reach out and, you know, they would have to pay cash. Is that fair to say?
That's often what happens, or perhaps more often they go without care entirely. And so in that written testimony I mentioned, there was a report from Mental Health America, which substantiated that significant portions of Connecticut residents who have mental health or substance use conditions are just going without care entirely because they cannot afford it. And very broad swaths of your constituents are struggling with these disorders. And Connecticut's behavioral health crisis is skyrocketing, well, perhaps beyond, you know, prior rates ahead of the pandemic.
All right, well, we really thank you for your testimony today. I thank you for your kind words, although I'm not sure whether they help you or hurt you in this legislature about me. But, you know, this is a very serious issue. You know, as I said before, mental health care is health care and the costs and the damage when it's not provided are real. And I think this is a concern of the legislature generally. And we obviously have a limited role to play here. But to the extent that we can help move transparency and accountability and compliance with our mental health, our mental and behavioral health parity laws in a positive direction, I'm hopeful that we can do it.
Thank you, Representative.
Further questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you for your time and your testimony. Loretta J. See you on the Zoom whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Flexer, Representative Blumenthal and distinguished members of the Government Administration and Elections Committee. Thank you for this opportunity to testify in strong support of HB 7207, an act concerning the disclosure of insurer reports concerning mental health parity. My name is Loretta J. and I'm a longtime member of the Connecticut Parity Coalition. Professionally, I develop and evaluate behavioral health programs and I'm also a special ed advocate. I see firsthand how the failure to enforce mental health parity denies people access to care, exhausts families financially and undermines the well being of Connecticut residents. I encourage you to check out the links to reports that NAMI's Tom Burr referenced in his testimony. And Christian just did an excellent job summarizing some of the effects of parity problems. For a snapshot though, of the links that Tom mentioned, Milliman's 2017 research found that Connecticut residents used out of network services for mental health care 11 times more often than for primary care. Since the pandemic, access has only worsened. To that point, you just heard how OHS's 2024 report revealed that the majority of commercial insurers in Connecticut show warning signs of parity noncompliance. Without stronger enforcement, insurers will continue to sidestep their legal obligations and families will continue to suffer the consequences. Nonquantitative treatment limitations, or NQTLs, are difficult to detect, making parity violations harder to address. By requiring unredacted NQTL reports to be public under FOIA, this bill will expose where insurers are failing and ensure that they are held accountable. Every day, I see families trapped by an unfair system. A mother and I contacted 27 in-network therapists for her daughter. None were accepting new patients. The child's condition worsened, leading to suicidal ideation. A family seeking residential treatment for their daughter was charged $1,000 admission fee, twice in one year, draining their finances. Neither of these admission fees were applied to the copay or annual deductible. Insurers routinely deny claims when families seek two therapy sessions on the same day, one for a child and one for a parenting session, despite these being separate distinct services with unique service codes. Conversely, there is no objection to people seeing a cardiologist and an ENT on the same day. Behavioral healthcare is unfairly restricted in ways no other field of medicine experiences. Please see my written testimony for additional stories about how mental, excuse me, about how mental health providers experiences and how they differ from other medical disciplines. The bipartisan 2019 parity law was a step forward, but without transparency and enforcement, it is meaningless. HB 7207 will provide the accountability necessary to ensure that Connecticut residents receive the mental health care they are legally entitled to. Families should not have to fight for care. I urge you to vote for this bill favorably out of committee and to stand with the countless residents who depend on a fair and accessible mental health system. Thank you, and I welcome your questions.
Thank you, perfect timing. Questions from the committee? I have one, which is, could you tell me a bit about the negative externalities, the societal costs, the potential governmental costs that occur when people don't have timely and affordable access to mental health care?
Oh, sure. Well, it certainly results in responding to the mental health crisis in an urgent manner. So with more ER visits, for example. And the longer we delay, the higher levels of care needed. So that's, it could also lead to more criminal involvement. Police, police are called to respond or an ambulance when things become a crisis. That affects full systems, municipal as well as state and healthcare systems. And then if you think about those who are on Medicaid or Medicaid and like Husky are limited services for people who have, who are on Husky, that also results in a higher level of care. And, for example, you know, we only have two, two residential facilities for children who require residential treatment, who are, who are except Husky. So the, one of my clients, a 13 year old, she needed to go in. It was a six month waitlist that required another hospitalization and urgent situation while she was waiting to get into that program.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your engagement and advocacy in your testimony before us today on this vital issue. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you for being with us today and have a great weekend.
Thank you very much.
All right, so that finishes our list. As far as I can tell, there is no one on the Zoom. Is there anyone in the hearing room currently who has not testified already who wishes to testify? Yes, sir, please come forward and make sure to state your name at the beginning of your testimony.
Good afternoon, Chair Blumenthal and distinguished members of the Government Administration and Elections Committee. My name is Sean Dwyer. I'm the Recording Secretary and Business Agent for Teamsters Local 443 in New Haven. I'm here to express my strong support for House Bill 7208, which proposes a critical framework for ensuring that the voices of your constituents are heard when it comes to significant decisions regarding the sale of municipal authorities and assets, as well as privatization of municipal services. House Bill 7208 is not just a legislative measure. It is a commitment to the democratic principles and community engagement. The requirement for a petition signed by 10% of the electors to trigger a referendum empowers citizens. The acknowledgement, it acknowledges the decisions affecting our communities should not be made in isolation by a select few, instead should involve the input and consent of people who are directly impacted by it. By allowing electoral to vote on significant matters, it will foster the necessary culture of transparency and accountability within the local governments. The provisions of House Bill 7208 ensure the municipalities cannot unilaterally decide to sell off public assets or privatize essential services without first consulting the community. These provisions are particularly important in an era where privatization so often leads to reduced service quality and increased costs for residents. Unfortunately, Connecticut residents have already begun to face consequences of these kind of privatization. For example, our members who reside in the city of Ansonia report major increases following the recent sale of WPCA to Aquarian. This sale has also affected members of multiple unions employed at the WPCA after they were consequently displaced into other positions after the sale. By allowing these decisions to be put to a vote, we will safeguard the interests of your constituents and ensure the needs, concerns and quality of life are prioritized before profit margins. House Bill 7208 is a vital and crucial step towards enhancing the democratic participation and protecting the interests of your constituents. It empowers citizens, promotes transparency and ensures the significant decisions regarding municipal assets and services are made with the consent of the governed. I urge you to support House Bill 7208 to help us create a more engaged and responsive local government. Thank you for your consideration.
And thank you for your testimony. Questions from the committee? Seeing none, I have one question, which is, since you're from the Teamsters and have kind of a wider ambit and maybe more information coming in from other parts of the state. We've heard about Ansonia, we've heard about Enfield, heard about Stratford today. Are there any other communities where the sale of a significant authority or department has happened recently or is being contemplated?
Not currently. We represent about four or five different WPCAs around the state and none of them are currently in this situation.
Okay, well, I appreciate that answer and you're being with us today and your patience. And, seeing no further questions, thank you for your testimony.
I appreciate it, thanks so much.
All right, is there anyone in the room who has not testified already who wishes to testify?
Good afternoon, Chairman Blumenthal, members of the committee. My name is Susan Halpin and I'm here today on behalf of the Connecticut Association of Health Plans. I'm respectfully testifying in opposition to HB 7207, an act concerning disclosure of insurer reports concerning mental health parity as a matter of public record. I'd like to first say that at our association, our member plans are committed to ensuring parity compliance. And our organizations invest significant resources to support comprehensive coverage for the mental health and substance use services. And we remain dedicated partners in that effort. We do have concerns about Senate Bill HB 7207, particularly with respect to the broad application of potentially proprietary information that are submitted by the health carriers to the department. And while we appreciate the desire for the transparency, we believe making these reports public has the potential to expose sensitive competitive business information that could create unintended consequences. That said, we're happy to work with the committee and others. In addition, we're just concerned about connecting that to state contracts, thinking that ultimately it could reduce competition for state contracts and limit the pool of qualified bidders driving up administrative costs and potentially impacting the efficiency of state sponsored healthcare coverage options. Lastly, I'd just like to note that Senate Bill 10, that's under the purview of the Insurance Committee, also includes language around these issues. And we would hope and encourage GAE to work with the Insurance Committee on those issues. And with that said, I really want to thank you for the opportunity to come before you. And our written testimony is in the process of being submitted, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the committee? Seeing none, I know you've been, you've ended up testifying somewhat last minute, but I did want to put the question to you that I had asked previously. You know, why specifically would we not want to make these records public? And if you want to refer to written testimony or you'd rather refer to a written testimony?
Sure.
That's fine, but I wanted to make sure that after I asked the question, when no one was here to testify on it, someone who was had the opportunity.
Sure, and I will provide you with a more detailed answer after the fact. And we're looking at exactly what's in those reports currently. I will say in the beginning, when they were issued, the tool was very new. It's very complicated and complex report and how you measure NQTLs and QTLs is, is, has been an evolution in terms of how those matters are looked at. So I think there was a concern, very much so in the beginning, that the reports weren't necessarily reflective because of the way the information is being collected. And that's not a criticism of CID in any way, shape or form. It really has been an evolutionary process. I think they're getting there now. And I think we're getting there now on behalf of the health plans in terms of how that information is collected and disseminated. And I think if you look at some of the comments that the commissioner has made recently, it's been complimentary of the cooperative nature of the health plans working with the department on this, in this regard. So we're taking a second look at that as a result of some of this legislation that's out there. And we'll be glad to circle back with you.
We appreciate that and certainly look forward to the written testimony. And, you know, as you mentioned, or encouraged, I guess, rather, certainly we would like to work with the Insurance Committee. We'd like to work with the health plans, anything we can do to move this process forward in a positive direction. So we appreciate the opportunity to talk more with you and the people you represent.
Thank you, and thank you for having me.
Thank you for testifying. Further questions from the committee? Seeing none. Is there anyone else in the room who's not testified, who would like to testify? Going once, going twice, seeing no one? That closes our public hearing of the Government Administration Elections Committee. We appreciate everyone being here with us to share their testimony and wish everyone a great weekend.